This is the Board of Selectmen Public Hearing. I am for Selectwoman Eden Wimbeimer. I'm joined by Steve Hall Selectman, Amanda Thompson Select Person, and I call this meeting to order at 5:31 PM. I will read... Oh, I need a motion to open the public hearing, please.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
A second there. All right, all those in favor of opening the public hearing? Say hi. All right, our public hearing is open. I'm going to start with 32 Spoonville Road. A public hearing relative to the sale of the rare portion of the town-owned property known as 32 Spoonville Road, map block lot 25-256, East Granby, Connecticut, 14,567 square feet. Said public hearing to be held Wednesday, November 13th, 2024, at 5:30 PM in East Granby Town Hall, 9 Center Street, East Granby, Connecticut, 06026, to hear comment and answer questions relative to the proposed sale. Would anyone like to make the presentation? Sure. If, um, when we get moving on along the agenda, whoever's speaking, just please state your name and your address.
Hi, everyone. My name is Cassandra Rosansky. I live at 10 Pleasant View Drive, and we are the house that sits next to the lot that we're currently in. My husband and I both went to East Granby Public Schools, graduated here, and now we have two boys going to the same schools that we did. We are looking, first of all, our roots run super strong in this town. I have been an active member, competing here president the last five years. I'm big into the Boy Scouts, I'm definitely there for my oldest son. We both help coach both of our boys. So we're looking to buy this piece of property next to our house. Originally, we had come to the... to see if we can build a barns in our backyard to house my husband's, his trucks, our camper, our boat, and our side-by-side. And we were told about six years ago that our lot was too small for it, and we weren't able to do it. And the only way we could do it was to build it attached to our home. But that would take out our entire side yard, and we have two small boys, and they have activities, and I didn't want to take their whole yard away from them. So we offered to purchase the property that sits next to our house behind the thrift store in order to build a barn. The vehicles that we were going to put in there are all housed in East Granby and taxed as arcade in East Granby. We're just running out of room in our yard, and we thought it would look cleaner and nicer to do so, and this was our only option.
Thank you.
And also, there was a letter going around, I'm sure everyone read. It did say that Eden was our realtor for this home. This was not the case. We ended up buying this home. I used to run in the morning, and I knocked on their door one day. We lived in an adjacent neighborhood, and I said, "If you ever want to sell your house, please call me. I love this house." And they were like, "Okay, sounds good." And then three years later, the phone rang, and they were like, "Hey, we're going to move to Florida if you still want this house." So we went over there, we walked through it, and we said, "Yep, we do, we want this." And we worked that with lawyers, and it was a closing, quick and done. So there was no realtor involved in this transaction.
Okay, are there any questions from... Kathy? You can probably say. Unless you want to ask Kathy, that's fine.
Oh, I was just going to ask, at what point did you request to...
Can you just state your name and address?
Derek Lyman, 11... Sorry, sorry. When did you go to Eden and ask?
So this wasn't Eden, it was before Eden was the Selectwoman. It was the Board of Zoning, Gary, that...
Planning and zoning.
We had gone, they told us we had to get signatures from our entire neighborhood saying it was okay with our neighbors to build this barn. We did, we went through all, our whole neighborhood. The houses on Spoonville in front of us as well, and everyone agreed to it. They said it was totally fine. We brought the signatures to the meeting, and at the meeting, we were shot down because our property was too small for it.
So when you said a year or a year ago she came to you and asked...
Yeah, so then I said, we were still talking about buying the barn, and as our boys got older, we got more stuff. So they have multiple quads, he has a Harley, we have a side-by-side that boys use, and there's just no room. And we bought a large SUV, which never fits in my garage anyway, so this was our only option. So we came to the town and said, "Is it possible we can buy the land behind the thrift store in order to push back our property to build a barn that's offset in our yard?" So we would still have the yard for the boys to play in, and still have like... It would still look pretty from the road with a pretty barn in the back. And that's why we're here.
Hi, Kim Cole, 142 Polcom Street. What is the fair market value of that property?
I think the appraisal was, um, $15,000?
$15,000, and what, the square foot is in eight, how much of an acre?
$14,000.
14,000 square feet. Okay, how much is that?
Quarter acre.
It's not a buildable lot, though. It's not a build...
Is it currently zoned to build on, or is there additional approval needed?
So can she... No, it's not.
So can she build a barn on it?
She just, I believe you just need the setback.
Correct. Just the footage, just the footage.
So it's not, it's not appraised as a buildable lot.
So it, like, sits next to our property, so the only ones that can access it is the neighbor on the other street and us. And we just need the square footage for the yard in order to build a barn. The barn will actually sit on that property, we just need the square footage.
My other question is, so why is the town willing to sell the land, though? Can, I mean, are we...
It's a thing, towns sell land. It's town-owned land.
Sure, it's town-owned land, but are you, as Board of Selectmen or as Planning and Zoning, looking for those types of requests for other town land? Or is this...
Anyone can ask to buy anything whenever they want.
Okay. This was kind of our last shot, too. We were like, we kind of kept going and going, and they just got accumulating more stuff. And it's just, it's so much stuff in the yard, so we just figured. And I stick a parking my car in my garage.
Jennifer ahead.
Jennifer Frank, 7 Valley View Drive. Could you also be accommodated by a variance from Planning and Zoning? They would just release her from the requirement for the offset space? Since you're not actually going to use the lot to build on, you're just using it to meet a regulation. That would be another way, you know, so we could keep our little lot around.
Did you go through that, Gary? I'm not sure.
Gary was... Gary said no to us.
Well, but it has to go before Planning and Zoning.
Yeah, so we went before Planning and Zoning, and one of our current attorney had to step off because he didn't want to vote, because he was our attorney, and then we were shot down by the vote.
By the Planning and Zoning Board?
Correct.
I think, I was on Planning and Zoning at the time, and I could be remembering this wrong, but I believe you came for a special exception because your lot was too small, and then it was a no because it wasn't within character of the neighborhood, right?
They wanted us to attach the actual building to the house, and we didn't want to take the entire side yard off, so we wanted to set it back a little bit more. And we had, we were going to do a big wood building and have it, like, beautifully built. It wasn't going to be like a, you know...
Right, I just didn't remember, like, the rationale because it was a special exception, and then I thought it was...
Yeah, we had to go back to everyone's door and get signatures, which we did, we followed all the protocols, and we came to the meeting, and they opened the town.
Sherry Ward, 42 Israel. When you look at the town website, the assessed value of that property is .68 acres total for the... and it's assessed at $83,800. And they want 14,567 feet, which is .33 acre, half of that property.
It's, yeah, I can explain the property description to you.
But what it's appraised at?
Right. The reason it's appraised at, what it's appraised at, is because it's a hill. It's a treed hill.
It's all treed, yes.
It's a hill, too, so you can't build on it. And the assessed value includes the building that's, and the improvements on it.
The land, the land.
Okay, so the land, like, okay.
$83,800, it was the land only. The building is $49,000.
The person who did the appraisal has, probably a lot of people know in here, Cindy Nemeth, she lives in East Granby and has been a resident for years, and the town uses her for many appraisals. So she's the one, it was a professional appraisal.
But there's an assessed value on our website that our assessors assess.
Appraisals aren't assessed values. There's a difference between the two. It's also not fair market value, and appraisal's not fair market. Fair market value is when you list a property and give it a value. Appraisals are, they're priced differently.
Assessed is usually lower than half market does.
Yes.
It's a... It does. But, okay. Depends on, it depends on, it depends. It's worth what someone's willing to pay, too, so... Do you want to go?
This is a gossip, and I live at 2B Metacoma, and I'm just curious how this impacts the property next door to it. Is there any impact to any of the neighbors? Does it...
I think a neighbor spoke to you, right?
So we've talked to the neighbor. It's not going to affect anybody. Again, the property that we're looking to buy, it really is a straight downhill line with trees. So obviously, we're not going to build on the hill, we're not going to bring it, we're not doing anything to the hill. We're just, we just want the square footage to build a barn on our property. That's all it is. And they're aware of it. They know that this has been our plan forever, to want it to be forever. So it doesn't affect anybody else. If anything, it'll look prettier in the neighborhood.
Jeff Packdake, Ranger Circle. So for full disclosure, I know Cassandra pretty well. We have kids about the same age, they play together, and I don't think that there's anything wrong with this at arm's length. I think that one of the biggest concerns that I've seen raised is not the value of the land, but what it does to the value of the land of the thrift store. And I can't speak to that, you know, I'm not a realtor. But I think that regardless, this would be, her being able to build the barn, whether it's through Planning and Zoning approval or through this land purchase, would be a net benefit to the town. So I'm just throwing that out there, that we want to consider. I don't think there was anything nefarious or sneaky, just knowing Cassandra. I think that this is all on the up and up, and she's a town resident for life, and I think that this is what a small town is supposed to do, is kind of rally behind each other. So if this doesn't get approved, I think we should all show up for Planning and Zoning to show that we support getting that barn regardless of the offset.
I agree. Any other questions for now?
Sandy Landalina, 8 Newgate Road. At the 1029 meeting, BOS meeting, you said that that land would bring in $2,700 a year in taxes for your town planner. Is that true? Had you had the assessor? No, you said town planner.
Well, I probably misspoke. It was, our assessor's the one who does the value, so... The taxes that would come in were $2,752.89. She saw the, she saw the square footage, and I asked her the question, and that's the answer she gave me.
So your taxes are going to increase $2,700 to $14,000?
That was what the assessor said. Well, that's the email I have from the assessor.
It's also the building improvement. It's like a $100,000 barn.
But it's not, I'm asking for the property.
Yeah, John Welsh, Strickland Road. Just a couple things, starting with Mr. Hekt's comment. So what would happen to the property on Spoonville? The property on Spoonville would become non-conforming because it would lose that $14,000?
It already is a non-conforming lot.
Town of East Granby owns that property. The Town of East Granby is one of five towns that's from our own zone of operations. So as far as that property is concerned, it has no impact on the thrift shop. However, it would, if at some future point in time the Town of East Granby wanted to convey the thrift shop to another person, they would be selling that property, and it would be non-conforming. That would mean that the person that would purchase that property would have to keep it as it is. They'd have a really hard time getting any kind of additional expansion to the property. The property would be destroyed, it would have to be built to save footprint. But really not an issue, as long as the Town of East Granby is happy with having the property on Spoonville Road, which they could have. As to the taxes and assessment, I won't tell you my experience in taxation, but I'll just go and I'll say real quick that the $14,000 square feet would be considered as excess land to the home site that's located on Pleasant View, okay? Most people in town, you live on a half acre, 30,000 square feet if you're in R30 zone, you're 20,000 square feet if you're in R20 zone. Ask me later what zone you're in, tell me your address. So the value of your home lot is X, and then anything over what's required by zoning is what we call excess land. To sit there and to suggest that the property, the $14,000 square feet, would be valued at the $2.37, which your home lot is valued at, is ridiculous. It would not be, the assessment on that would probably be such to generate, by a reasonable guess, a few hundred dollars a year in additional taxation. When I heard the $2,700 number that was talked about, I came to Town Hall, came to see Eden, because that was obviously a mistake, and I wanted to correct that, because it's just way off base. So I have no objection to the transaction, provided the, you know, if you've got your neighbors on board, and your neighbors, you know, want to support you in that, it seems like a good idea. The thing to Mr. Hekt was, the idea that the neighbors would come and they would somehow support Cassie and her husband in trying to get some kind of variance, it's just not going to happen. Our regulations are such, our zoning regulations are such, to protect the entire community, to protect all of our neighbors and all of our neighborhoods, a variance is granted when there's a true hardship. And to sit there and to say, "I want to build a barn on my property," is truly not a hardship, as I'm sure Mr. Letkinfelder, a town attorney, would tell you, not a hardship. So that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Just to clarify the taxes, I reached out to our assessor. She didn't know the reason I was asking. It was a lot going on. So I asked her what they were, and that's the answer she gave me. I mean, it's, this isn't, this property's not sold, so all this, well, this is the email I got from her. It will all be, we'll know exact numbers when the contract is signed, which will be after a town vote. Is there any other questions regarding Spoonville Road?
Christine, 122 Spoonville Road. Just a question, how many neighbors did you survey or were you told to survey in regards to your...
We did our entire street on Pleasant View, and then we did the neighbors directly behind us. So like, our, I don't know his name, directly behind us. We went door-to-door.
One on Old County, and then...
The two that's behind us.
Two that's around the thrift store now, and then the one looking to the left of that house, too.
And then our street.
And our whole street.
Additionally, in regards to the question about the cost of the lot and how much it's appraised for, is there an ability to have a motion set in place to get a third-party appraisal of that lot versus someone that is used by the Town of East Granby?
Potentially. But even if it was offer, if, even if we had an appraisal of $100,000 for the property, we had a three-week period of accepting offers, and this was the only offer we received. So it's worth what someone's willing to pay for it.
So it's worth more than someone's willing to pay for it?
If we only got one offer, that's what it's worth. It might be valued higher, but we only got one offer. So, and this is the offer that...
You can actually buy land that's cheaper than it's appraised for. So if I came in here and asked you to buy land...
We would put it through the same process and put it on the town website for sale, which we did this property. This property was on the town website for three weeks for sale, and we got one offer for it.
And if I may ask another question, how do you post the sale of land in the Town of East Granby? Is it up to an individual to come into the town to find out what land, and I'm talking all of the town, what land is up for sale? Or do I have to go to the website? How do I know what land is up for sale?
Well, this land, this particular piece went, the Rosanskys came to me and asked. So in the past, I think there's been different processes in the past. I did the most transparency. I went above and beyond what the rules are to do. In the past, we've sold land, in 2007, we sold a piece of land on Old County Highway. It just went to town, town meet, town vote. It didn't even go to have a public hearing or an advertising period. I had a three-week, I had a Board of Selectmen meeting on September 25th, announced the land that we were selling, and said it would be posted on the town website until October 16th at 2:00 PM for sale, and that's when we received offers. So in this particular case, these are the three properties that we were discussing. Everyone came to me. So that's how, to answer your question.
Okay, so if I came to you, then I guess...
If you know the piece that's for sale, correct.
Then that would be made public to everyone?
Correct.
And they can choose to make an offer on that town property?
If they see it. If they check the website every day and see if there's a line item that says, "We have land for sale today."
Right, that was why my question was, is land posted on the website? All of the land that was available?
No, just, just the ones that were for sale.
Just the ones that were for sale?
Right.
But you said that any land that the town...
If you are interested in...
Of course.
Well, if you're interested in purchasing it, you would come to us and say you'd like to purchase something. We're not selling all of our town land.
How do I know that it's...
Well, if there's, just like this, if there's something, if there's a need you'd like, and you do your due diligence and research...
My due diligence is coming in?
No, if you see something that you want to buy, you look at who owns it, and if the town owns it, then you would come here and ask to buy it.
Interesting.
We're not in the market, we're not in the business of selling land. So it's only if...
Oh, it sounds like it, though.
Well, these people came to us. So if you came to me with a need or a request, I would work with you.
Oh, okay. I'll take the, I'm at offer then.
Okay. Yes, sorry, there's one person behind me.
Dale Reiner, 9 Hamilton Road. I'm in the understanding that the way the land was advertised was not actually the way it's supposed to be advertised. The land wasn't posted from the beginning. The, it wasn't in a more public, you know, like, a newspaper or you're supposed to have, like, when you have a probate or something.
I'm not aware, I'm not...
Well, you know, I'm sorry, even if you're not aware, doesn't mean you're right.
Do you want to answer that? Okay.
I'm not finished.
Okay.
And this concerns me a lot. I'm happy that you have so many things that you need to build a barn to put them in. I think that's truly a good thing. However, just walking into the town and saying, "Oh, there's this property for sale," and who set the price of the property, I'd like to know.
No, we just accepted offers.
That's wrong. So that, to me, if I was selling a house...
That's wrong.
I would never just say, "Hey, you offer me a price, and whatever you offer me, I'm going to accept." That's not right.
That's wrong.
That's not the way things happen in the real world. That doesn't protect the town because you're not operating in a real transparent way. This is a backdoor deal. And I'm sorry, small towns are not meant to have backdoor deals just because they're small.
Okay, so you asked your question.
I don't believe this was public enough. You did not have somebody not associated with the property set a price. You didn't have a third party protect, you know, how do we know that $15,000 is really enough to pay for that property? We have no idea.
Okay, do you want to talk about it?
There was an independent assessor.
Yeah, that's what I mentioned.
Yeah, there was an independent assessor that works with the town regular that set an appraisal on.
So I'll go back to my motion. Is there an ability to get that assessed again? Or is it the rule of thumb that you will sell a property based on whatever anybody wants to offer?
Also, I think before this land is sold, it should be advertised properly. You say you have only one person. I'm not surprised. I never saw any of these properties available for sale on our website. And I had visited the website often because I was looking up reports on meetings and various things. I never noticed it, okay? I don't think you did your job to make it public knowledge that these properties were available to begin with.
Okay, so I could just interject, I'm sorry. When we were, this whole thing started, like I said, we had gone to Planning and Zoning, done all that, we did, we jumped, we did whatever we were told to do in order to obtain this barn. And then when it came time, if you look at the back, I'm sure, people have been driving by all the time lately, so it literally is a straight downhill, and it's got trees on it, so it's not buildable for anybody else. So if anyone wanted to buy it, you're more than welcome to. It's, you can't build on it, and it's only accessible between our property and the neighbors that know we're buying it anyway, and they're aware of it, so...
But it also leaves the town with a piece of property that will be dead, that nobody will be able to do anything with in the future. So there's also that to consider when you're talking to the town residents who aren't, you know, involved in these situations.
I don't, that's, the town property's not dead because we took off $14,000 square feet from the back of it. John already explained that. Okay. Is there any other questions?
It won't be rebuilt.
I should probably check in the pool.
Excuse me, I do have another question. I'm not opposed, in all honesty, to your prop, you know, you buying the property. What I am opposed to is that there doesn't seem to be any coherent rule of thumb in order to get the property valued appropriately, sold at a particular price, and also be made aware, in general, when properties are available for purchase. And if I need to do my due diligence, and if anybody else agrees, I ask you to do your due diligence and maybe bring some properties up that you'd be interested in, just, you know, maybe acquiring.
I would do it the same exact way.
Okay, very good. Well, I really do think the town needs to put a process in place that's a little more solidified.
So would you want to, this is our town attorney, Scott Leganfilter.
Good evening, Scott Leganfilter, I'm the town attorney. With respect to the process for selling land, ultimately, it's got to be approved by the town legislative body, which is the town meeting, which is why we're going through this process here today. Before we can sell the land, we have to have a public hearing, which is where we're at tonight. There has to be notice at public hearing, published in the newspaper two times, as well as the land that is being discussed at the public hearing posted with the sign that it's being discussed, which was done. There is no requirement, as was mentioned, that a town, that a piece of land be posted that's for sale. That's not required for the sale of municipal land. So the process, in terms of legality for the process, was followed by the town. Somebody came to the town, standing there interested in the land. The town advertised on the website, which is not necessary. There's no requirement that they advertise it. What's required is that they have a public hearing, and they go through the town meeting.
Did they post it in the paper?
Yes, twice, the public hearing.
The public hearing was.
Okay. And, and what about payment, or like, value of the property? You can just pay whatever you desire to make an offer?
So the ultimate decider of if this property's going to be sold by the town is the town meeting. And just like with any sale of real estate, or any sale of any property whatsoever, it's what a buyer and seller are willing to agree to. So you can get an appraisal for whatever you want, doesn't mean that that's the property value. Property value is what the fair market value is, and that comes from any...
Who determines the, the sale price?
What's that?
Who determines the sale price?
The party seller.
The buyer and seller?
So Spoonville is just the seller, exactly?
The town, the town legislative body. It's a town meeting, we're having a town vote on the 19th.
So next week at the town meeting, if the residents of the town do not feel they should sell the land, they can vote against it.
Where was the signage for 205 Turkey Hill? I never saw signage for 205.
It's on, it's on, it's right in front of the landfill.
It is now, it is now, but it wasn't on the day that the other signs were on. It's supposed to be up before the date.
They all went up on the same day, so...
What day was that?
Our custodian put them all up on whatever the date was in the paper on the first date. He brought them to all the properties.
So if I could just speak again, Kim Cole, 132 Holcomb Street. I actually, the reason you want the land makes a ton of sense, right? And the reason you're going after that makes a ton of sense. I think why most people are here is how the board of selectmen have gone about this process. You don't even have exact facts to provide us. You have not instilled trust in the voter. An informed voter is a powerful one. To quote FDR, "In politics, nothing happens by accident. If it happens, it was planned that way." And I think most of the feedback you're getting is because it feels very intentional, the way you have gone about these three land sales. If I could recap that, I think people are here because they don't trust the process. I don't think most people are probably going to mind. And if a vote of no happens, it's because of how it was handled.
Yes.
Or the perception of how it was handled.
We've been very open. We had a public meeting about it. A board of selectmen, the selectmen.
You're very dismissive of feedback and you're not, you're not.
I don't understand.
I missed them on Tuesday.
No, it was a regular board of selectman meeting on September 25th. I don't think anyone.
Why can't this happen? You present the property to the public, you're meeting like this, then you offer them acceptance, then you vote. Like, it just seems like the process.
I followed the town attorney's line. I didn't make this up.
Why can't the information be like, there's a public hearing about this property that, these properties that are offered. And then you put the properties out there and get it, once the public knows about it, and then you have the vote.
I think that's a stop. Yeah.
Hold on, one at a time here. So Scott, why don't you answer her question first?
So I believe the selectmen did discuss.
Could you stand up? Because back here is a little hard to.
I believe the selectmen did at their regular meetings discuss this, which was an open meeting for everybody, that they posted on the website saying they were accepting bids for it. They were open meetings. Whether people attended those meetings or not, beyond their control. But they did post it, which is why we're. Would you like to finish? Sure.
We did, we did do that. We, on September.
Yes, it's kind of a town's hearing. Why can't you have this hearing? Then somebody offers out, then you do the vote.
I guess it was, it's never, it was never done like that. It's not done like that anywhere. Okay.
As a town, we want to change that.
I, I just want to reiterate, this is about Cassandra at this point, trying to get this property. I don't, I don't want to turn it. No, no, I'm saying this piece, this piece right here.
It's all right.
No. So I, I want, I want to just say a couple of things. One is, when we talk about the land value, people are saying $100,000 for that land. I don't know if you guys saw a year or two ago, the houses, the plots of land going up Brighton Drive, there are seven, eight acres of pristine buildable land that we're selling for $100,000. So I would say I'm not as concerned about the value because what happened is she put in a bid, and if we don't like the value that she put in, we can deny it. And I think that that's what we need to think about on the vote on next Tuesday, is specifically, if you don't think that land is worth 5,000, you think it's worth more, that, you know, that's, that's an opinion question. And I think that we could do more diligence as a town to get that information. I don't think it's way off because it's non-buildable land, it's landlocked, it's, it's really a tough one. But my question is, what does it do to the value of the other property that, that you're taking away from? Does it subtract more than $5,000? I don't think that property, the thrift shop property, is worth $250,000, $300,000. And I don't think it's going to break it down that much, but I can't speak to values that much. I just want to make that, this perfectly clear, that from, there's political aspects, and I understand there's political charges here, but we do also need to be aware that there's a real person who's.
That's not the point.
Sorry, sorry. Political process, political process.
It's not against Cassie.
Yeah.
I myself, not.
Okay, are there any other questions? I'm going to ask Nicole if there's any questions online.
Eden? Oh. Sandra Johnson, 8 Adams Drive, Scramby. I'm sitting and listening, and really, what, I think we have an energized town. It's very exciting that we've had, you know, the last few years, a really energized town. And I think what everyone's feeling, which you certainly stated very clearly, the, there's not a feeling of transparency, there's not a feeling of that kind of communication. I'd recommend, on something of this level, you've got three parcels together. Use the line item for Let's Talk Turkey for a month and put out all of this information to everyone in town so they have an opportunity to see that there's three potential land sales, when they could come to a meeting like tonight. If you didn't catch it on Facebook, you'd never know. And I happened to stumble into it on Facebook. So, you know, if you're not a religious Facebook user, how, how are you going to find out? I just think there needs to be more of an effort on transparency since there, there is clearly a disconnect. And maybe that would be a way to pull back, send something out to the town with all of the information on the properties, all of the mapping, everything that they would need to know, so that there can be an informed meeting to come in. It's not fun to have our, our residents, and it's, you're caught in this spotlight.
I hope to have this type of turnout when I go to the town about our million dollar water bill that we haven't paid in years, that I inherited.
Would love to do it.
So there's a lot of what you are up to do. I never get any feedback about that. I don't get feedback about our sewer system that hasn't been maintained for 50 years. So I'm just saying. I'll see you all when I have those meetings too. And we can talk about transparency.
Okay. I, I just want to say that every time, I've just started getting involved in politics. Pamela Martin, Ten Hill West Road. It seems like every time I talk to you, I hear you say, he said, she said, they said. So I don't want to hear that anymore. I want you to do your due diligence. Because every time, even in the last meetings, the budget meetings and everything, you said, that's what they told me, that's what they told me, that's what he told me. It's your job. Just, just do your job.
I'm the leader of the town. I, I manage 55 employees. That's, they come to me with the information.
Okay.
I'm not a, I'm not a lifelong municipal leader. So I'm, I'm learning along with you. I defer to my.
Okay, I just, I, I hear it a lot.
Okay.
And I'm not a politician.
I'll try not to do that anymore.
That would be great.
Okay.
And, and the concept that I've heard a lot too, really bothers me.
Well, you're yelling at me, so.
No, I'm deaf in one ear.
Okay.
And I talk louder. And I've been waiting for 10 minutes with my hand up.
I know.
And you went over me and over me. So whatever, I'm just saying. The other problem I have is, what, nothing against you, I'm glad you got all those toys, but what happens to the rest of the property? That, my concern is what happens to the rest of the property?
The rest of the thrift shop?
With the thrift shop. Is, if, if we don't have a thrift shop anymore, what would we do?
It's staying the same. Nothing's changing with the thrift shop.
What would you do with it, though? What would we do with the property?
It's going to stay the same.
If it wasn't a thrift shop?
A non-conforming lot, so you can't do anything with it.
So if it isn't a thrift shop, it's.
Correct.
There's nothing we could do with it? Would we use it for town offices? Would we make museums?
No, I don't think there's a proper well and septic there, from my understanding.
Okay, so her prop, that piece of property makes no difference whatsoever with what we do with that property down the road.
Correct.
Okay. And then my other thing is about transparency, obviously. Talk Turkey would have been the best place for it. People do not have the time to go on the website to see if something's for sale. It really, I know you say you don't have to, but it's only a good faith to do it, to let people know. People don't know these things. Everybody's life is busy, just like you, with 55 employees. It would have been great, I make it a rule to read through Talk Turkey, so that I know everything. My husband's always saying, how do you know? I said, because I read it in Talk Turkey. I just saw there's a, the town of Culber has a weekly thing that the, the town selectman writes in that lets him know everything that's going on in town. Quick little synopsis, but it's great to read. It's just nice to know what's going on in town.
Thank you. I appreciate that. There is a question online from Amanda Copeland, what the hours for the town vote will be on November 19th. And it starts at 7:00 PM, and we did move it to the high school. It's not a hybrid meeting, it's in person, and we'd like everyone to be able to come. So you just need to bring your, an ID just to show you're a resident or a bill, to show you're a taxpayer. So it's November 19th at 7:00 PM at the high school. Yep. And it's not hybrid. And then I have another question. Was the taxpayers' money prioritized to improve the parcel of land? How much, there's an unethical investment to prioritize, prioritize the project over other needs in town? There was no taxpayer money spent, I think, how much, we haven't.
We talked about Holcomb.
Yeah, I think they're talking about Holcomb. Because that was our question.
Oh, Colin?
Who's Colin?
Oh.
Holcomb.
Colin's iPhone, it says. Okay, okay. And then I have another question. I'll, I can, we're not talking about Holcomb, we're talking about 32 Spoonville right now. So let me see. Is there a closing scheduled for tomorrow? No. Oh, that's for Holcomb, no. There, there's no closings on any of the properties until there's a contract. And that happens far after the town vote. Once there's a title searched on, once there's all the proper necessary things for a closing. Done.
Point of order, could we excuse Cassandra?
Yes, you're excused. Go to work. Cassandra has to go to work.
I have to go to work.
Is the vote on the 19th, all three parcels, or can they be voted up or down? Yeah, so, um, there are separate votes on the 19th, yeah. Yep. Any other questions?
Votes, it's going to be yea or nay, or is it going to be like, no, we think you should be done?
No, it'll be a yes or no.
Or?
Yes or no? Yep.
Yes or no, but not say, well, 5,000 is enough, it needs to be more. Okay to sell it, but just more.
Oh, go ahead. I, I told him he could go first. Yeah, you go. And I.
It'd be separate majority, so if three people show up and two people say yes, and one person says no, it's done.
Correct. We had, Planning and Zoning had their 824 review last night to whether to move forward with the sales or not, and it was approved to go forward. It's based on our plan of conservation and development, whether it's appropriate or not to sell town land. And there's nothing in it that states it shouldn't. Had that vote been not favorable, then we would have needed 2/3 of a vote at the town meeting. But because it was favorable, then we only need majority. Yep.
I thought that wasn't a vote last night. Didn't you, did it mean that there wasn't a vote in the report, like we didn't have to?
So Keith Claffey is on Zoom. Do you want to ask a question, Keith? Thank you. Oh, you're muted, Keith. Keith, are you there? Okay, I think that's it. I don't, he's not saying anything, so. Do we have any, okay, one question?
Friend of ours, Four Old Farms Lane, Scramby, 35-year resident. If the, if the vote is a nay on this, when was the next time it would be available? And would that also open up the bid again for more competitive offers?
You're talking about the, the Spoonville Road?
Always available.
Yeah, it's always available.
I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, it would be available. It would be available again, I guess, right?
It's up to the town, yeah. It's up to the board to decide if they want to bring another proposed sale through this process. It'd be a whole new, it'd be a whole new process, just like this, where.
So that could be actually for any of the three, or two now, sales, property sales, if it's a no from the townspeople, and it go up for bid again and publicly seen by many more.
Yeah, it's up to the board of selectmen. If they want to take offers again or do a bid process of whatever sort, they could do it again. Does not forbid it from happening again, does not require that it happen again either. It'd be up to.
So wait, who, who makes the decision? For bid again? The, the selectmen, the board?
Remember what Eden said earlier, she accepted an offer on this one, then put it out on the website, accepting more bids.
So that, that piece of land will always be for sale? If we vote no.
So.
Yeah.
That piece of land will always be for sale again. Always be for sale again.
If the board of selectmen is willing to bring it through this process, it would always be for sale, yes.
And each of the pieces and parcels will be independently voted, not all of.
Correct.
Correct.
So I can share a little more. I, I mean, I did share this at board of selectman meeting, but I, I'm happy to share it again now. So what I did about, I have the dates in here. On December 13th, I decided to, from the advice of a council, to get a group of people together. It wasn't a committee, it was a group of residents bipartisan. Joe Doring was on it, Paul Leva, Lisa Dora, you probably all know these names. Joe, Joe Doring was my opponent three years ago, and we have a great relationship. So I asked him to be on the, the board, the group. And basically, we just had discussions about properties, these properties, the interest that we have. And I said to them, I want to be as transparent as possible, and what happens if I have more than one offer? So I was prepared for this, December 13th. And then I, I gathered these people. January 28th, I asked, can you guys meet on Zoom? On February 15th? We met February 15th, and then we met February 22nd, earlier this year. So basically, this group was formed so that if we had more than one offer on a property, what do we do? Because I was related to the Holcomb Street property. It's no secret. And, and I just wanted to make sure if we had two offers, or three offers or four offers, I was trying to avoid China from dumping money into East Gramby for tax purposes. I was trying to avoid any type of, or not avoid that, but what happens if that happens? And we have three or four offers? So we talked about conditions. Well, why don't you look at who has the highest and best use for the property? It would, you know, that would be a condition, on the list of conditions. Who has a budding property? Who, what property, who does it serve best? Because I don't want to own the property on Spoonville Road. I would have nothing to do with, I wouldn't need it. So who do, who do you give favor to? In case we had more than one offer? Well, it turned out we had one offer on each property, and we had, we opened the bids on October 16th, which was the last day to receive them at 2:00 PM. At 3:15 PM, Joe Doring couldn't make the group. Art Reardon was in the group too. So Amanda took Joe's place. So Amanda was there when we opened the bids too. So it was a very transparent process. I didn't realize that everyone wanted to know the entire process, but just so you know the history of it, it was, I went above and beyond what the rules are to sell town land. Questions?
Yeah, Bill Hearn, Winding Hills. If your goal was transparency, and this process began January, you said?
December.
December.
December. Sorry, I missed a month there, but were, were it, how many months since then? So if.
I wanted to make sure I was doing it properly the whole way.
If your purpose was transparency, as you just said, then why didn't you make that process public? Why did that process have to be private? And since you chose to make that process private, as you say for due diligence, I just have a hard time with all of this. I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing clarity, I'm not seeing transparency.
Okay.
And I'm not finished.
Okay.
I've watched you step on everybody as they try to speak.
I'm not, I thought you were finished.
I don't understand how you guys think you're going to have any, any relevance to the citizens of this town with the process that you've gone through. It might be, you might have listened to your council, you might be following the rules. It doesn't seem like it, you might be. But I, I just can't understand how you guys think that this was going to be reasonable. And if you did think it was reasonable, then there's a big problem.
Yes.
We have another question online. Jason Hayes.
Ah, Eden, can you hear me?
Yeah, I just saw your question. I didn't.
Great, yeah, this is Jason Hayes, it's Washington Ridge Road. I have a few things to say, I'll be brief and some, kind of tight with this. So the first thing I want to say, this process has not been transparent. It has not been forthcoming. This, this has been going on for X amount of months and X amount of months, as you stated, but no one in this town had a clue that you were selling land assets. These things do not belong to the board select, they belong to the taxpayers. Every grain of dirt belongs to the taxpayers of this town. They had no idea that you were selling these things. So the first, one is a contaminated landfill. That should raise serious concerns for this town. You kept, on the 1029, you kept insisting that was a single real estate hill, a single real estate hill. The ability to drink the water that comes through my.
We're, we're actually, Jason, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we, we just need to talk about, we, we're talking about Spoonville right now. This is the, the public area.
Right. And that Spoonville lot is grandfathered. It's not a nonconforming lot, as you keep trying to tell everyone. That lot is grandfathered, so it is buildable at a certain size within what it has. There is well and there is subject there. Obviously, it would have to be upgraded or transitioned. But if you sell that back lot, you lose the ability to use that lot for anything further in the future. So that lot then becomes not, it becomes, you lose the grandfather on it once you cut that back half of that lot off. So what is the town to then do with that? The town owns a lot that, God forbid, this town does need the money. We cannot sell that lot to pay any of our bills or debts or whatever issue might arise in the future because you have sold the back half off for a few thousand dollars instead of working with that family to figure out a way to get them the outbuilding that they need as a resident of this town to take care of them, but at the same time, respect the investments and the assets of this town. That's the biggest problem. You have not followed the proper process. None of these were advertised in the newspaper. None of the landlot signs were put up until after I questioned you about it on the 29th on the Zoom. You have not handled any of this process properly, adequately. And I think that you, the board of select should be ashamed of themselves for this entire process. And I'm glad to see that people are out here. And I hope that at this point, you're realizing that people are paying attention. And I hope that Eden and Steve, I hope that both of you kind of have learned a lesson from this because the way this has been handled is shameful. And I really hope that people pay attention to the answers they're getting because half of these answers are not the same answers we got on 1029. They're not the same answers we got a week ago. And I think that people really need to start paying attention. And I think that we need some no votes on these deals until the board of select does its due diligence and gives the information and the process that is due to the taxpayers of East Granby. Thank you.
So the board of selectmen, I haven't changed anything. That land, that lot is a nonconforming lot. In the town of East Granby, John, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The town of East Granby does not have to abide by zoning regulations. So the town can own the lot the way it is. We wouldn't be able to sell it. Someone wouldn't be able to, maybe we could sell the Okay, someone suggested moving the thrift shop somewhere, which that's a couple hundred thousand dollar move. So that would be pointless. But if somebody was to tear down, if we were desperate for money and we tore down the thrift shop, the two neighbors could maybe buy, the Spoonville Road neighbors could buy a chunk of land. Maybe we can get money that way. But other than that, someone wouldn't be able to build anything on that property because it's nonconforming. The town doesn't have to follow the zoning regs.
According to the state of Connecticut, that is not true. That lot is grandfathered in. You could build on that lot at the size that it sits. If you cut it in half and sell off the back, then you no longer have that grandfathering. The lot would not be buildable, as you stated. But your first statement is incorrect.
Do you want to expand on that? Oh, no. So to answer the question regarding the public hearing notices, so we didn't have to put, I think we talked about that already. We don't have to post for sale signs. But we did post the legal notices for this public hearing twice as required by law. And it was done on the proper date. The signs went up when they went into the Hartford Current. Then they went up again. The sign went, I think the Hartford Current got printed again. I don't have the date, I don't have the work in here, but they got, they were put into the newspaper twice before the public hearing, as they were supposed to. I think we also hear
Please, can we be supplied with those dates?
Nicole has those dates.
She's not able to track nothing. Great. I'll check with Nicole. Thank you.
She's on Zoom.
I think we hear what the town is saying about they would like any land sales to be posted. Let's talk turkey for better communication and signs posted on each property when it goes for sale, not at the point of the town hearing. And that's noted, right?
And you can change that, right?
You have the right to change that rule. Yeah, this is the first time I ever sold land for the town.
Does it mean that you can't put a simple policy like that in place?
Correct. So, yes.
What I'm concerned about is when it was posted for three weeks, it was time of the essence. What was the urgency to have three weeks for a sale?
It's a legal term.
To get more offers, but just three weeks. And Talk Turkey would have had a whole month for people to look at it.
There was another agenda, I believe.
There really wasn't.
Then why is it satisfying to the public that what the actions that you've done? You know, I don't think, you're hearing the feedback, Eden.
Right.
It's, this isn't working. And frankly, in this day and age, I probably speak for a lot of other people. I'm getting older. I have a lot of things on my plate. I don't need this kind of ruckus that is hocus pocus and, you know, let's be real. And like this gentleman said, if you, you know, if you thought this was transparent, there's a big problem here.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing was in the newspaper on 11-1 and 11-6, as required by law. There's, I think there's other questions online. Oh, yeah. Keith Claffey, do you want to try again?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that before. This is Keith Claffey. I'm from Sixth Washington Ridge Road in East Granby. I think, I just wanted to raise a couple of points. I think, you know, we all now know that there's a difference between a town hearing to share the information that we're taking offers as opposed to when we're putting town property up for sale. So I think, you know, that's part of the discomfort, at least for me, is that I didn't know the process. So when I saw it was already happening, we were we were accepting offers. I didn't know that there was a process, and it kind of took me off guard. Had I known, I think I would have been more comfortable with it. So clearly, that it helps that it's maybe a little bit more well-defined and we know what we have to do and pay attention, that we're not going to see a big sign, for sale sign of a piece of property that's for sale by the town. I think there was also some misunderstanding about who determines the market value for that property. And I just want to clarify because you gave a good explanation of, you know, the market value and whatever somebody's wanting to pay for, basically, and these people and that it seems like this property is of value to them and probably not anybody else. But then Steve had mentioned assessed value by the assessor in Granby or whatever that person is. I'm sorry, I don't remember who that is. So I just want to make sure that there's clarification, that the assessed value is not, we're talking about market value.
The praise value.
And I understand everybody else's point on that.
Right.
And then finally, I think there's some discomfort, Eden, I think, or at least perceived discomfort that even when we ask you questions, we're not feeling confident that we're getting either accurate information or information that you're going to stand by. And so that's, you know, the question about the tax income from that property. When you presented that to us at the last meeting, I would have thought that that was exactly what the income was going to be. But as we learned tonight, that's likely not going to be that. So, you know, I think it would be better and we all feel more comfortable if you say the first time, saying, this is what I got from the appraiser, but might be different or put some explanation into it so we're not looking at you and wondering why we're getting two different answers at two different meetings. You know, we, you know, people in the town voted for, they voted for you in this position. And we need to know that you're responsible for acting on their behalf and that you take ultimate responsibility. You know, when you say you have whatever number staff and they come to you, we have to know that you have vetted their answer and that you can rely on your answer. I can't go to my boss and doing things on my staff. So we need to have that kind of confidence in you. And even if it's just transparent, you say, you know, I don't really know. This is the answer I got from this person. But, you know, it may be something a little bit different. So I think that's what I'm feeling like we need to hear from you so that everybody feels more comfortable and a higher level of trust.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I'm human. I asked, I reached out to these people for these numbers, and this is what I got. And I am trusting them. We're not signing the contract now until after
I understand that. And I understand that we're all human, but we, you know, we need to know that you're taking responsibility for and that you're checking into it.
Okay, I am.
And that we're not getting multiple answers at different times.
Okay. Okay, there's somebody news online, so let's Okay, Judy Klein?
Hi, my name is Judy Klein. I live in the Southwood ledge in East Granby. I'm wondering if we have any idea what the costs are to convey the property. Do we have to, it's a split lot from what I understand? So do we have to do a survey? Just want to know, you know, is the purchase price going to cover the expenses that the town has to sell it?
No. So once we go to town vote, and if the sales go through, each buyer is responsible for their due diligence to get it to closing. So they would be paying for their surveying, for their attorney closing costs, and whatever other costs there are on top of the purchase price.
Well, maybe, maybe I didn't explain myself. What I want to know is, do we have to, we're splitting the lot, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if we're doing that and we have to, we have to do a deed, we have to write a description, don't we have to do a survey?
The buyer does. The buyer pays for the survey.
The buyer pays for the survey, even though the seller is the one that's splitting the lot?
Correct.
We put it in a contract that the buyer is responsible for the cost of the survey and the lot line adjustment.
Okay, so the buyer's going to survey the lot. We're going to write a deed for the new description. And then beyond that, what are the costs? There has to be more costs than the attorney's fees.
I think they were two, how much were they?
Attorney's fees, which would be the cost for the closing, which is not significant. I think I told you the, depends on how many hours go into it, but it's
Is it a flat fee, like is the attorney charged for closing?
Not for, not for commercial deals. When it's considered a commercial deal, it's usually not flat fees.
This isn't a commercial deal.
This is treated like a commercial deal with the contracts and the lot line adjustment. But most of the out-of-pocket expenses, for example, the survey and the lot line adjustment and the drawing of the adjusted property description would be borne by the buyer.
Okay. And so we, the only responsibility the town has is to pay the attorney. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
For the closing?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you guys have another meeting at 7:00? Since we have two
Well, we're just going to start at 6:30, but yeah, we'll start.
This might be a question for the attorney up there. What is the fiduciary duty, statutory duty, general responsibility of the board of select people? So we don't have a transparent process. This has been going on for almost a year. Committees were formed without public disclosure, and town land is for sale, part of which is to Eden's family. So how does this all square? Because it doesn't look really good. And you, as the town attorney, what advice were you giving to the board of select people as they were forming secret committees that weren't disclosed to the public? Did you have knowledge of that? And did you tell them that that was okay?
Not aware of any secret committees.
It was secret to everybody until we just heard about it now.
I have a lot of meetings throughout weeks and things. So, I mean, if it was a committee that was making a decision and we were voting on things, then yeah, I mean
So we're probably back to Connecticut State
It was a group of people with different political views that I brought together to make this fair. So if you don't want to leave it, it's, I can't do any
Two questions and then we'll talk about
So I had a question, it's not been answered.
Okay.
Fiduciary duty. What fiduciary duty does the board of select people of East Granby have? What are they required to do? There's town property that they have decided is going to be up for sale.
So their fiduciary duty with respect to the selling of town property is to have a public hearing, which we are at tonight, post that public hearing in a newspaper of general circulation in the town at least two times at certain dates prior to the public hearing, which they've done, to post the public hearing notice on the properties that are subject to the public hearing, which they've done, and then to bring this forward to a town meeting for the legislative body, which is the town meeting in this town, to vote on whether or not the town meeting approves the sale of these properties.
And are they required to disclose any conflicts of interest? Are they required to refuse themselves from the process, the decision if they have conflicts of interest?
So that's a personal decision for each elected official to make, and if they feel there's a conflict of interest.
I did recuse myself of accepting an offer during a town, during a meeting.
We need to edit the notes, but she did refuse herself.
Yeah, we're editing the minutes tonight. I just have a question online. Who was on the committee we created? It was Joe Doring, who was a Democrat, Paulo Leva, who was a Democrat, Paul Tulian, who I believe is unaffiliated, maybe Republican now, Art Riordan, who's a Republican, and Lisa Endora, who's a Republican. So that answers a question that's on Zoom. Angela, I'm trusting that you heard that.
I have a clarification on the thrift shop. So to my understanding, the thrift shop was originally a one-room schoolhouse, right? Therefore, it's grandfathered in, but that does not make, just because it's grandfathered in, doesn't make it a building lot, does it? That's where I'm looking for clarification.
It's not, like, someone other than the town cannot build something there because the town is, in better words, of zoning regulations.
So it's not really a building lot?
Correct. It's not. It doesn't have the road frontage. It doesn't have
Okay.
So even the size it is, I'm sorry.
Pardon?
But even the size it is, even without giving that third of it away.
The way it is now and without, the way it is now is a nonconforming lot.
Which would not build
Correct. Okay, wait. Yep.
I'm sorry, John Welsh. I just have a couple of questions. So could we move over the mountain to Holcomb?
Yeah, so So I have two more
The questions I have are specific to the property and not the process?
Yeah, so we're actually, I have two more online. As long as Cheryl and Lisa are ready, and it's regarding, it's regarding Spoonville.
Yes, I just have a quick question.
Can you just say your name?
Environment. Sometimes the selling lawyer fees have also been mandated to be paid by the buyer. So that was a question as to how much that we are going to incur in costs.
Okay, I'm not aware of that, but we
And would be included in the selling price because they need the property as opposed to we were looking to sell it.
Okay, it's something, yeah, we can definitely consider that. Thank you. And then Lisa?
Hi, Lisa, 44 North Road.
Speak up? Yeah, can you speak up? Thanks.
Yep. So Lisa, 44 North Road. Was wondering, is there a reason why y'all selected the Hartford Current as that publication? And I'm going to sue the Talk Turkey, which is, you know, a pretty wildly read publication. I just ask because I personally am not getting the Hartford Current. That's not something that I pay attention to. I'm certainly not going to read it cover to cover. However, the Talk Turkey one, I do. So I would anticipate that it's something just very East Granby, so they would issue it to me. So three, five minutes.
I'm not exactly sure why we use the
It's typically moved to statewide.
Legal notices have to be published in a paper like that.
Yeah, I don't think it's circulating enough, Lisa, just because it's the town of East Granby. It is available online, but noted that we could and we should, correct? Thank you. Okay, so if everyone's ready, we'll move on. And I'm actually, oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, are you going to do a presentation on the property?
I'm actually tabling Holcomb Street. I announced it this morning at the board of select meeting.
So that won't be
Correct. It's not moving forward.
You might still have a lot of questions about
I guess it might be helpful to everyone and for you, Eden, quite honestly, to explain why it's not moving forward.
Yeah, so this is what I did have, I was planning to, yeah. So this morning, I had, we had a board of selectmen meeting to set the call of the town meeting next week. And we had to get it into the Hartford Current by 12 o'clock today in order to meet the guidelines for, required for a town meeting. So, and this is what I read before the meeting. As part of our due diligence in preparing for the public hearing and town meeting, we reviewed the land records and maps for the properties being sold. It was determined as part of this review, the town-owned parcel on Holcomb Street is approximately double the acreage the town lists it as on the municipal property card. The deed into the town and the tax assessor lists this parcel as one acre. However, the property description on the deed, which is accurate description of the property, shows the property may actually be over two acres. As we now know, this parcel is larger than advertised and discussed today. I do not feel at this time it is appropriate to keep moving forward with the sale. We may still proceed with the sale of this parcel, but if we do so, it will leave with accurate information. It is important for taxpayers and residents to understand, finalizing the terms of the contracts, performing surveys, doing title searches, environmental testing, et cetera, are all part of the due diligence process, most of which takes place after taxpayers and residents approve the sale. Had this issue with the Holcomb Street land come up after the sale was approved at a town meeting, we would not have proceeded any further as the sale would then be something different, be for something different than what was discussed. Same holds true for the other parcels. If something comes up during due diligence, which is not to the town's liking, the deal will be taken off the table. So I removed it because it was already in the public hearing. And we had this agenda set for tonight. I'm just tabling it down.
And so I would ask Scott, if contracts been withdrawn by the town of East Granby?
So there's no signed contract on that property as of right now? And so there's no, plus even if it's not approved at town meeting, it would not be
Signed by one of the parties? It's signed by one of the parties?
There was an offer.
There was an offer.
There was nothing...
Offer, which was received.
Right, so there'll be a revocation of the offer. There'll be something legal that you'll have in your hand that says that this deal's going completely south.
Yeah. Yeah, put it right, doing that right now, this is off the table, and it's not going forward.
I hear it, but I need to see it. Right?
Holcomb's not going forward, yeah.
It's real estate. You need to see it.
How did the town learn that the property was actually 2.1 acres instead of the one acre that they were selling?
The town attorney. Let me know.
As I was going through the records, getting ready for the public hearing and whatnot, I pulled up the deed, read the description of the deed, which said the one acre, just like the tax assessor card did. Then, as I read the property description, looked a lot bigger than one acre, so I measured it out and saw that it's...
And when did you determine that?
It was this week.
When this week?
Yesterday, I believe. Yesterday, the day before, it was last...
You're not certain whether it's yesterday or the day before?
I'm very busy. It was this week, it was yesterday, the day before. As I figured out, I thought you did not.
So, you did not, you did not have any knowledge that one of our town citizens had done the simple task of pulling it up, looking at it, and then had published a multi-page description showing this discrepancy? You had no idea, none of you? Just came to you independently?
Well, Chris Fisher sent it. He sent a letter to me that apparently was, like, circulating everywhere.
Chris Fisher's letter?
Yeah.
That shows the little square and the big piece of property? Yes.
I don't think you got a copy of it.
Yeah, I don't receive letters from residents.
So, you didn't hear about the letter? And you're not sure what day that you determined that this huge discrepancy...
I looked back to my notes, if it was yesterday or the day before, but it was this week.
Wasn't it just that the intended buyer has to do the due diligence?
They would do a survey and whatnot, especially when it comes back to the Spoonville property, where we're dividing the land. We're still, as a town, making sure that we're doing the right thing by the town.
So, back to due diligence fiduciary duty, how is it remotely reasonable that the town is counting on the buyer to perform the due diligence that determines the value of the property? Doesn't that seem backwards?
Yes.
You want me to repeat it? How is it, because you're looking confused as your town attorney, how is it that the town is counting on a buyer to do the due diligence that actually establishes the size of the property, the expanse of the property? And then that sets the value, their bid sets the value. So, how can you guys characterize that process as reasonable fiduciary duty, reasonable due diligence? That's backwards. I know you guys know that's backwards. I don't think that this is a surprise to anyone sitting up here at the front tables. Do you have an answer, sir?
We review the work that is done, it is part of the process. If a survey is done, for example, it'll be by a licensed surveyor who has his license behind it. We're not gonna take a random...
This is far down the line, again, again. The town, which should have a fiduciary duty to get the most value for town property, and their attorney are telling the town's citizens that they have no fiduciary duty to actually determine whether or not the size of the properties that they're selling is accurate. That's what you're telling us. You're telling us that that's okay, and that somewhere down the line, if you guys don't completely blow it later or deliberately ignore the situation, somewhere down the line, it might get caught by someone else. I don't call that due diligence, I don't call that a fiduciary duty, I call that shirking what is just basic work. You guys have GIS systems, geographic information systems, which the town uses and your 65 employees use on a regular basis, which I'm sure all of you have seen, where you can pull up all the...
It says one acre on our JAS map.
Whether it says one acre...
Right, that's where the discrepancy came from.
All we have to do is look at the boundary and put a square over it, as Mr. Fisher did, and that is what I would call a minimum of due diligence.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's how come we tabled it. So, we're gonna have a new appraisal done, maybe someday, and I don't think a non-buildable lot with a brook running through it is really gonna increase that much in value.
How do we...
What process will you employ?
We will hire whatever assessor you want to do it.
This isn't about assessment, this is about the due diligence of our elected officials in transparency.
All right, we're gonna move on to, there is one person who hasn't asked a question yet. So, I'm being told that if someone, okay, someone has their hand raised. Amanda Copeland?
Hi, Amanda Copeland, 74 Schoolhouse Landing. Two questions. Are we making any accommodations for the vote on the 19th for people who work second shift? Or have school functions of any sort of that nature? My second question is, for the property on Spoonville, especially for the thrift store, will their water or sewer be affected when we split this piece of land? Thank you.
Will the Spoonville property be affected? No. No, their water will be affected.
They have water and snow, they have a working bathroom.
It's not on the hill part that they're selling, though. The hill is in the back of the property. And it's in-person only, as we do every town meeting. We did move it to the high school to have more space than the community center.
But wasn't her issue, the timing?
Yeah, unfortunately, it's... We always do, we normally always do town meetings at 7:00, so...
So, there's no way to vote?
Okay, so we'll move on to, since we're tabling the...
I just wanna state that I think what you did was very rude, cutting this gentleman off.
I tried to answer him. I, I'm sorry if I didn't answer you properly.
And you did, nobody answered his questions. And I also wanna point out to the people who are on Zoom who might not have noticed that when he asked the question about the fiduciary, or one of the questions you asked, our town attorney had a smirk on his face, for people who didn't see that, and I find that offensive. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to, I know there's two hands raised, but we'll reserve it for, they've already asked questions.
I still follow my question to my previous one?
Should I? No, we need to table this.
Okay.
This is a table discussion, so we just need a point of order at this point and move forward with it.
Well, my question, before you table it, is what process will you institute in the future, so that what we're talking about here tonight isn't possible? Because what I'm hearing from you guys is that no one up there is taking responsibility for the fact that you took a bid from your family members, which was the only bid for a property, which was sold as one acre and is 2.1 acres. So, I don't hear anyone taking responsibility for the process, the lack of process, the lack of due diligence. And I'm not hearing any solid information from the attorney. He can't remember which day it was that he was made aware of this. I'm very skeptical of his claims, that he independently determined that it was 2.1 acres versus one acre. Are you willing to testify to that in court, sir?
This issue has been tabled. If you would like to discuss it further, you can make an appointment with either, or the town attorney.
Okay, so we'll move...
Yes, sir. It's tabled. If we need to move along, because we have another process to go with today.
We're a citizen that way. That's terrible. That is, that's terrible.
And start over again.
Yes, you should. Terrible.
The whole thing, this whole property thing should be...
It was not done properly.
Put aside and start over again.
And put some process...
All right, I'm gonna look back at the minutes from 2007 and see what kind of activity there was at the meeting and why people were so upset. Okay. All right.
Point the border, please. We're gonna move on to...
We're gonna move on, please.
205 Turkey Hills Road. I will read the...
Okay, yeah, no, we tabled, sorry, sorry, Jim.
I'll wait till this Attorney Bregno's presentation, I have a single question.
Okay. A public hearing relative to the sale of the town-owned property known, oh, excuse me, that's wrong, hold on. Town-owned property known as 205 Turkey Hills Road, block lot 10-50.
Put it on the table.
Go behind the slide.
Put it on the board.
Sir, it's upside down.
East Granby, Connecticut, 39.01 acre, said public hearing to be held Wednesday, November 13th, 2024, at 5:30 PM in the East Granby Town Hall, 9th Center Street, East Granby, Connecticut, 06026, to hear comment and answer questions relative to the proposed sale. John, did you wanna ask now?
Well, I think we're doing a presentation.
Just have a question, sir, Attorney Bregno.
Just to be clear on the agenda, we're doing a presentation, then it is questions, then we will ask for comments for in favor, and then we will ask for comments in opposition. So, please keep that in mind as we're going through it, what you have to say, if it is a question, if it is for, or if it is opposed. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tim Bregno.
Could you speak up, please?
Sure. My name's Tim Bregno, and I own Bregno Farms in Town. I live in East Granby and have lived in East Granby since 1993. I've owned the property where the vineyard is since 1993, and in 2016, put the old Thrall Farm under contract. Currently, my children and my grandchildren live right here on this property, right next to the farm. So, all nine of my, seven of my grandchildren and two of my children live here, and another daughter and two children live in Spoonville. So, we are invested in this town with Bregno Vineyards, and have spent quite a bit to improve everything we've done in this town. And have looked at this progress. This is the actual farm itself. So, what you look at is, this pink here is the actual dump that's being sold. It says, this is a copy of the East Granby assessor's map. So, if you look at this green, this green is our farm, which is Farm 3. This is a field right up here, there are two barns, which are right next to the dump. These are fields here, these are all fields, these are barns that are here, these are fields. We virtually are 100% surrounding the entire dump. So, we came about to coming to the town with this property and the request to buy it, when we basically went in about a year and a half ago and started clearing the woodline back, and when we, there was a field, there used to be a field right in here and right in here, and when the dump was created, they took and they made this field area part of the dump. We had to cut the trees right to the edge of this, and we went right around it. And at that point in time was when I looked up to see who owned it, and that's when I came to the town hall and ascertained that it was part of the dump that, I didn't believe that this was part of the town dump, but I found out when I came to the town hall that it was. So, I came to the town and asked Robin, how would I be able to acquire this piece of property? And she said that we would have to go to the town selectmen and have them sell the property. So, the reason...
Robin's our town planner.
Yes, Robin's the town planner. So, I basically came to the town and asked to see if I could purchase the town dump. Now, one of the things that's most important in this whole process is this. In 2008, when Thralls bought this farm, the farm was completely contaminated, and we had to put it under what was, what's called an E U R, which means that it can never be built on with any residential. It's contaminated site based on what the tobacco farmers had used on it. So, we had to basically deal with the D E E P on the site and have with Ann Cattino gone through the process of going through D E E P and dealing with contaminated sites. So, that's already been done. The EU, it took us from 2016 to 2022 to get all of that through the D E E P. All right? So, with that, Thralls, when they bought the property in 2008, they sold the development rights. They sold them for close to $4 million. And when they did that, the state and the federal government now own the development rights on the property, which means to us that we can only use it for farming purposes. So, I've gone to them, and I've said, you know, we'd like to use some of the woodlands and put in some solar for our farm, our barns. And you may ask, why do we want solar for the barns? And here's the problem with what's going on at the farm. Last year, we had a banner crop, but with all the rain we had last year, when we put the tobacco in the barn, everybody in the state of Connecticut, including us, lost all of our tobacco and all turned blue with mold because of the amount of rain. We could have, if we had the proper conditions in the barn, dried the barn out before we put the tobacco in. This year, we had a beautiful crop, and we put it in the barn, and the barns are so hot with no water and no rain, that half of the barn, the bottom half of the barn is fine, and we've gotten all of that tobacco out, but we can't even touch everything in the top half of the barn. That is because it's all dried out because of the heat in the barn. So, we've gotta do something that the old farmers didn't have to do, we do with climate change. So, we're looking to put solar somewhere on the property. Now, this area here, if we acquire this, we now get the opportunity to put the solar in here, which would then be able to take the barns and allow us to upgrade the barns. There's 14 barns on the property, we pay property, we pay property taxes on all of them. The dump, the actual dump itself, I've identified, is this mound here in the middle, and the dump doesn't go to the edge. The dump is pretty much in the center, and they've used an edge around it, and it goes to the edge of the power lines. So, right now, the town spends $10,000 a year in just monitoring, all right? They wouldn't have to do that anymore, we would. The town has, is paying insurance on it as a dump that has exposure. They would then, with the sale to us, we would then be responsible from this day forward for maintaining all of the insurance and maintaining the dump. The town wouldn't have to do that anymore. We would basically be taking care of the cap, we would have to follow all of the federal and state regulations that DEP has and that the US, that the US government has under hazmats. So, the only access, because I've heard, you know, how is anybody gonna get access to the dump? Our access is right here from Hartford Avenue. This is an existing easement that Hartford Electric has. They have this easement in their deed, or in power deed, that gives them the right to come out here to the electric company, electric lines. So, the only access to that property is from our farm and right now on those roads. So, one of the other things, like Cassie said, somebody somehow claimed that there's a relationship between Eden and us, and we, that she sends us real estate closings. Everybody here that I know that's a client of mine has never had a real estate deal with me, I don't do real estate, so I don't take any referrals from Cassie, or from Ms. Winfimer. So, there's, this isn't a backroom deal, this is, we need that piece of property for the farm, and it's going to be used. This right here, we intend on clearing this area and using some part of it, either for solar or for farming, or some other uses that we can, we can use that land for that we can't use the other land for. That is the land that we sold, that was sold for the development. So, we're really looking to take care of the dump and improve the property so that we can improve the farm that's there. It's 445 acres, which is the size of the farm, and if any of you've been by it or seen it or gone on it, we have completely raised and elevated everything on that. You can see us, we're rebuilding the barns, we're fixing all the barns, we're doing everything we can to husbandry the property, and we're here long-term. we can to husbandry the property, and we're here long-term. The vineyard's not going anywhere. My, all four of my children work at the vineyard. My grandchildren are at the vineyard every day. So this is, you know, I've read the comments that we're going to create liability, and that's why I brought Ann Catino here. We're not increasing any liability. We're not doing anything to the dump. It's basically a dump. So we're sitting here and we're wondering where, it's all speculation that there's going to be anything different done with the dump. It's complete speculation. So Ann can, I'd ask Ann to come up and tell you what's required, what our obligations are, and how we basically have to maintain that area in a certain level to give you some kind of security. I understand what my obligations are, having dealt with the DEEP, dealing with Ann Catino, and I know what our obligations are. We have to have bonding. We have to have $1 million worth of bonds to maintain and make sure that we carry out our obligations with the property. So at this point, I'd ask Ann to come up and comment on.
Tim, can you state your residential address? Someone's asking.
No, I live at 117 Feet Mountain Drive, right off of Mete Comic, so.
Good evening. I'm Ann Catino. I'm an environmental attorney with Halloran Sage. Tim has asked me to explain what kind of obligations he's going to be undertaking to the extent he acquires the property and acquires the dump property. Landfills, as he had indicated, are heavily regulated by Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection, DEEP or DEEP. DEEP has quite stringent regulations, many of which the town complies with, some of them they don't because they're municipality and they're excused. Financial assurance is one of them, posting the bonds, because in the event there's a default by the town, theoretically, the town can raise your taxes. Private citizens who own and operate landfills and seek to close the landfills, they don't get to raise anybody's taxes. So the department requires them to post various forms of financial surety, could be letters of credit, could be bonds. It has to be ultimately negotiated and approved with DEEP. Now, why do you need this financial assurances? And what does the town currently do? As indicated, there are a series of monitoring wells on this property to determine the leachate quality and the groundwater quality in this area. Based upon what we understand right now, and I've made the request of the town, the town appears to do this two times a year. That obligation would be assumed by Mr. Brigno when he takes over this property. You wouldn't be doing the monitoring. He'd be legally obligated to the state of Connecticut to engage in all of the monitoring that is required. Similarly, there has to be inspections of the cap. You need to make sure that the cap is still covered and it has integrity. He would be undertaking the responsibilities. In the event the cap fails, he'd be responsible for maintaining the cap, doing the inspections, whether it's biannual, quarterly. A lot still has to get worked out with DEEP. We need to understand, in fact, what is the town currently doing regarding inspection of the cap and the integrity and what kind of repairs are being done. And then we would piggyback on that. But going forward, if there is any additional cap maintenance or cap requirements, if the change in the, if there's a change in the regulations, and say for a sake of discussion, it's two feet, DEEP thinks four feet, Mr. Brigno would have to bring in the additional two feet and cover the dump. It would be his responsibility going forward. Now, if he, if he were to develop, which you really can't do on a dump for a variety of reasons.
You want to call it a transfer station?
It's not, it's a landfill.
It's a landfill.
It's not the transfer station. It's the landfill.
We don't, do we still dump in it?
No.
It's what's considered a closed landfill. And the closed landfill has the cap on it. If you were going to pierce the cap, even to, you know, put in, for example, a telephone pole, you have to go to DEEP and get landfill disruption and closure approval. So you have to go in, tell DEEP what you want to do, how you want to do it, and they need to give you approval in order to disrupt the cap. And then you have to rebuild it and maintain it again. It's a process. You need environmental consultants. You need engineers. It's, it's a complicated regulatory process. If the town even wanted to put in a telephone pole and just making a very simple example of it, they would have to go through the same sort of process. So the town is being relieved of those responsibilities and the obligations going forward. No one's going to be dumping any more materials. You can't, you'd have to open up a whole new permitting proceeding, which won't exist in the state of Connecticut. Connecticut has said, no more landfills, period. It's over and done with. The permitting process would take 30 to 50 years if you even tried. It's not happening. You're not going to open, he's not going to open this dump. Instead, as he had indicated, this parcel right here may not necessarily be part of the cap proper. Solar may be appropriate here. We're at the stage where we have to do some due diligence as part of the process. And I think you've heard people talk about, what is the process? An offer's been made. We weren't sure if anybody else was going to make an offer. We provided a purchase and sale agreement that included a due diligence provision in it so that we could investigate, survey, title. What's the historical condition of this landfill? What really was dumped there? What do the environmental reports say? What was the closure? What's the groundwater? What's the leachate quality? Which direction is it flowing? What are the concerns, north, south, east, and west? So that we have a good picture of what is happening on this property so that Mr. Brigno knows exactly what he's acquiring. There's a baseline that's going to be created so the town knows what he's acquiring and what potential liabilities, if any, the town may still be exposed to down the line, if any. Likelihood, not. You probably would have seen liabilities associated with this, the closed landfill by this point. There doesn't appear to be any, but we have to still run through the process, do the due diligence. Everyone needs to get educated as to what really is going on on this property. And then the town attorney and I and the town selectman and Mr. Brigno will finalize a purchase and sale agreement that will set forth all of the various terms and conditions. We may disagree right now on some of them, but the idea is in a commercial transaction, you work it out. We'll dive into the title more. We'll dive into the surveys, the utilities, geotechnical analyses. When you engage in a commercial transaction like this, there's a lot of work that has to get done before the property's acquired. So as part of this process now, because it's a municipal land that's being acquired, you have to have the Board of Selectmen hearing. You need to go through town meetings. You could say no, you could say yes, but it's after those approvals that we really roll up our sleeves and get going and do the investigation. And then we have to work with DEEP to exactly find out how we will proceed with DEEP. And, and so that's the stage that we're at. But I, I do think it's, it's worth noting that this is a unique situation. Landfills are not normally acquired by the private sector because of the risks and the liabilities that are associated with them. And in this instance, Mr. Brigno is taking over those liabilities, taking over the insurance, taking over the responsibility for the cap, for the groundwater monitoring, for any of the risks going forward. If DEEP says, okay, you've all heard the terms PFAS, you have to test for PFAS, that's going to be on Mr. Brigno going forward if he acquires the property. That wouldn't be on the town. So I think that there is, this is an acquisition that's going to be highly regulated by the state, and there's going to be opportunities as we move forward to negotiate, for the town attorney to negotiate, what he believes is in the best interest, working with the selectmen, the best interest of the town, and what is possibly doable and would work for Mr. Brigno so that he can fold it in to the farm.
So one of the things that I want to point out as this one is the price. To me, the value of this property is everything that is what would be west of the dump. The dump is a liability, but that area west of the dump is what I base my value on. I've heard everybody complain about the fact that it's going to cost money to, in fact, conduct this transaction. And I heard for the first time tonight that the transaction's a commercial transaction and not going to be an $800 real estate closing. So I am prepared to add to the $50,000 bid that I put on there that I would reimburse the town for their attorney's fees costs so that the direct benefit to the town would be the actual purchase price, and they wouldn't have any other expense other than that. We've had our survey people out there. So I heard at the very beginning, some clamor about the surveyors were out and that the town was, had surveyors out there and it wasn't the town surveyors. Those are my surveyors. So I'm, I'm fully invested in this project and prepared to make the town completely whole with regard to the purchase price. All right? So that's all I really have.
Okay. Hold on. I have some questions, but I don't know if you want to speak to anything before-
There's one relevant question on here.
Sure.
I mean, will there be a complete hold harmless upon the closing of the agreement? Essentially, Brigno will inherit and be accountable for all future risk and accountability with this property and with tying onto it and with other adjacent downstream properties should runoff or other contamination effect. Those is the town held harmless.
Let me take one of them.
That'll be in the purchase agreement.
That would be in the purchase agreement, but just so that everybody knows, the day of the closing, we assume full responsibility. And we basically are, as they use the term full harmless, we in essence, basically for everything that we do and any liability that is created as a result of ownership of that property, use of the property, anything that goes wrong with it, failure to comply with DEEP is all of our responsibility. And that is part of the whole process. When you buy these, when I bought the farm and the EUR was on it, I basically told, I took over the environmental contamination that they had on the property, and I am responsible for it from that day forward. And I've got to maintain it. I can't increase it. I can't do anything to cause it to spread. I've got certain requirements that the DEEP places on us with regard to that. So to answer that question, that's basically how all of these work. I mean, this isn't, this isn't an unusual set of circumstances. Nobody buys these things and say, well, we're going to completely exonerate you for everything that you've done. No, the town has created a dump. They got a contaminated dump. They've done everything they were supposed to do, and we will monitor it. And as of the date of the closing, we will have an idea of what the town's dump contamination is, and we'll say, we will take it from that point forward and basically handle all of the, any further contamination beyond that. But that's just the way the process works. So that's the answer to that question. Right?
Yeah. Yes, of course. Okay. Yeah, yeah. Just one second. I have a couple of quick questions. Just to make sure, you don't want to put solar on top of the landfill? You just want to put it on that side parcel?
Let me put it to you this way. There is a process, if you go to Hartford, the Hartford landfill, the backside of the Hartford landfill is a solar field.
Correct.
So there is a method and a process for doing that. So in order to do that, you have to go to DEEP. You have to get permission to do that, and you have to be able to pay the special type of system that goes on. It's very expensive, and if at some point in time, you know, we look at the cost value of it, again, it's regulated by DEEP, it's a special setup to put it on top of a landfill, you know, that all becomes a business transaction. But again, assume for a moment we put something on it and a windstorm came through, took all of the solar panels off and removed the top part of the dump. Immediately, my responsibility. I have insurance for that. I have to take care of that. I've got to comply with DEEP. I have to fix it. And if it contaminated a well down the road that wasn't contaminated before, but contaminated because of this event, I'm responsible for that. That's why I have my insurance to cover us. I'm not looking to create liability that I can't afford. So, you know, it's a business transaction.
I have a couple of other questions real quick. So DEEP can do a pre-application, so you can kind of lay out what you want to do, and all of the departments give you feedback on that and whether that's doable, what kind of financial assurances. You would need, have you done that yet?
No, no. That's for permitting.
Well, you don't have to wait for approval in order to do that.
Well, I'm not going to pay for her to do that unless I know that if, if we agree that you want us to move forward and you're willing to sell the property, then absolutely we have to do that.
Before contract.
So you would wait, yeah, if the town were to say yes, but before you would purchase it, you would do that?
Absolutely have to.
And it would be continuing as part of the due diligence process. We'd want all of our permits and approvals in place prior to-
Yeah, we couldn't close without everything.
And then my question for Scott is, besides having the indemnify and hold harmless, DEEP can have financial assurances. Can the town also put a bond as a part of the contract deal? Because we had talked about that, Ian, when we had the smaller discussion, just about if anything were to come back on the town, can we also hold a bond as a town?
So normally a town would not hold a bond in this sort of matter because DEEP is the one who's going to be monitoring going forward and put the financial assurance, whatever that, whatever they determine that a financial assurance has to be in place, will not be the town putting that in place. It would be DEEP.
Right. I just think the concern is obviously that it would come back on the town as the, as the people who originally made the decision.
Any liability that the town would have subsequent to the sale would have to be for something that the town did prior to the sale. If there was runoff right now from the landfill that was contaminating a well, A, we would know it from the monitoring that we are doing twice a year, but that would be what we'd be responsible for, not for anything going forward. Subsequent to this, it would be on whoever owns the property at the time.
Okay. Thank you. I think those are all my questions. So now we are doing questions right now, and then we will do comments in favor and comments in opposition. So this is questions right now, specific to this property.
John, John.
Thanks.
Jumping up and down.
A question for Tim Brigno. Catino.
Catino.
Catino, sorry. Tim, real simple, the farm property noted in green there, that's presently in a 490 open space, a farm, correct?
Yes.
Good. And then with the acquisition, you would merge?
No.
You would keep it as a separate lot?
Yes.
Would you go 490 on that until you've got your approvals?
I believe we've discussed with the tax assessor, and the tax assessor has indicated that we could, she's going to have to figure out how to assess. I mean, it's a dump.
This speaks to taxability, that's all. And then if I could, I know that Halloran Sage, that you've done this type of application. Have you done it? Where have you actually gone looking for a solar farm? Or not necessarily a solar farm, but panels that are sufficient to meet Tim's need as the firm handles the application?
I don't know, I don't know enough about this dump. We've worked on the Hartford landfill. We've worked on others. I have no idea.
Because there's all sorts of wild stories going back to the 70s and 80s, which is why the development at Brantwood is town water. Properties up on Mount Vernon, Washington Ridge, anyone lived there? Any of those places, you're on water because-
I have a well.
Some of you are, some of you aren't, but that's, that's just history.
There's got to be a lot more investigation. A lot more done.
And then the last one, Scott, and no disrespect to you, has the town of East Granby retained environmental counsel just to work with Halloran Sage?
We've not as of yet, no. I've been in contact with DEEP on a regular basis regarding this. We've discussed it. We've not obtained outside counsel yet. If the town approves this at a town meeting and we go forward, we will get independent environmentalists.
No disrespect to Mark or yourself.
Bentaken.
Okay. Right.
And I've also indicated that I'll take care of that expense as well. When I'm done, the town will get a check for 50 grand.
That's it. Thank you.
Sorry, I answered him.
Just a few questions regarding the property itself. Have we as a town-
Has, have we as a town explored what we could do with the property, thinking through open space or a solar farm? From what I've seen, if we were to lease out land, I don't know about dump space with the caps and everything else, but it commands about $1,000 per acre to $2,000 per acre for leasing. That alone is, at 39 acres, $40,000 a year, which is what we stand to return in one year from this. So that's my first question, is what have we done from due diligence to find out how we could monetize the property ourselves or use it for open space processes? Because you, you did allude to that it's landlocked, but it's landlocked except through town access, through the transfer station as it sits right now. So we do have access, if we were to open that up on a daily basis for, for people to come in and use it as park space, whatever the case might be.
You can't use it for parks. It's a dump.
It's encapsulated.
Yeah, it's encapsulated.
It would be considered recreational use?
Yeah.
And this is commercial industrial use. It wouldn't be allowed to have this be recreational use.
Okay. So solar leasing then. Second question would be for you. Is this going to be your per-- You keep saying, "I'm going to purchase." Is this your purchase or is this purchase under Brignol Vineyards LLC or?
The offer's been put in under Brignol Enterprises LLC.
Okay.
So it's, it's, yes.
Okay. So it would be a corporate transaction to the town?
It's a LLC.
Okay.
It's a little bit of land to the area.
Okay.
Owned by me.
So we had a meeting with Broadleaf or Desery who's going to be putting in the solar that's over where Monrovia Farm is currently. We just talked to them Tuesday, Monday?
Yes, I don't know what day it is.
So--
Yesterday.
Yeah, Tuesday. So we did talk to them about what our options would be if we wanted to keep it and we wanted to put solar on as a town. And there are two options. Either we can connect, kind of, in, have a smaller line kind of connected to the power lines and we would work it through Eversource as far as like what, what we would get back, whether it would be a credit toward what we spend as a town or if it would be a certain amount of money depending upon how much went back into the grid, I guess. And then the other option is that we could do the same thing, but work it out with Broadleaf. And what we would do is they would essentially lease it. So they would put it right into their system because they're already putting in, you know, hundreds of panels anyway. And then they would pay us. I would assume it'd be a yearly or a monthly cost in order to, to lease that. So yes, the town potentially could do that and make money off it. The concern is the cost of putting it on top of the, the landfill. And so we did get-- Did he send you the list of names? We had asked for a list of Connecticut companies that have done a similar thing in order to get a little idea of like what the cost benefits would be. And I, we don't have those.
I don't have those yet.
I can tell you this. We are currently, if you know where the vineyard is, it's right here. I'm with property right here. It's right here. And we own this piece as well. So this is the vineyard right here. We pay close to $5,000 a month in electric at the vineyard for manufacturing process. To put in behind this building, two arrays of solar panels from here to the wall so that we can have this building and the two buildings here and our building covered with solar cost, that's two, $325,000 just for two banks of solar going like this. It would cost the town or whoever, if somebody wanted to do it on this, I don't, I'm not saying here, it's, it's going to be hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars upfront. And what you're trying to do is with us, and the analysis is this, I'm paying $5,000 to Northeast Utilities to borrow $325,000 so I can go to a zero, it's going to cost me $3,000 a month for my $300,000 loan. So with that, to me, it makes financial sense. You've got a dump that's just sitting there. You're going to spend, assume, $500,000. And you're got, you're going to have to spend that and you're going to have to wait years and years and years to get one of, one penny of that profit. It doesn't make sense for the town to do that on this site.
Isn't there an option to have the company pay for it, get the tax credits and lease, as she was saying, lease the electricity back so there's no cost to us, the taxpayers, but just a small, much smaller benefit over time?
That's, I don't know about that process. It may be a type of system that you could do. The only one I know is I bought, I paid for ours. There's a reason why.
Yeah. So I, the unfortunate thing is that we only had that conversation yesterday. So I think we need a lot more information, you know, whether that's a reason why maybe, I'm sorry, but you may want to vote no, is in order to give yourself more time, in order to have that information to make a good decision for the town, not that, you know, I'm, I'm just saying, it, it would be helpful for us to have that full information to know if it does benefit the town or not. And that is very unknown at this point.
This meeting for a landfill, I'm not, don't know anything. I don't think the town's in the solar business, was my opinion.
I, I wouldn't have expected you guys to explore that until--
Right.
So I, I don't--
Question.
Uh, yeah. Ben Skousen to be meta-comment. My only concern is this. We're talking about selling this land, including the dump, to a limited liability corporation. And you look at the property lines and there are residents, including relatives, on one side or the other of this dump. Not saying that something will go wrong or will possibly go wrong, but every once in a while, it's a dump. That's why people don't sell them. That's why the town tends to own them. Are we truly comfortable with a limited liability company owning a dump that could have liability out its ass if there is a leak or something else dangerous happens with this land that he neither is privy to or we have not researched and found? Because these are our, these are our--
Our neighbors.
Our neighbors. That's all.
So part of the process that I discussed with DEEP regarding this is that they will require that financial assurance because it is an individual or an LLC or a corporation, even if it's not a town or a government, they require that financial assurance from. What that is, is that puts a bond in place where the state of Connecticut has the money if the LLC were to go under. The LLC goes bankrupt, state of Connecticut has that money through the financial assurance to address any problems that do occur.
So are we still on questions first?
Questions. So if you have a question specific to this property.
Um, I have to see. Um, you've, um, in the back, he's had his arm raised the whole time. Thank you. But then you can go next.
Sell electricity out of this place, Mr. Miller. Yes. Oh.
Mr. Miller.
Oh, they're very close to this area.
Okay.
The North Road.
Okay.
And I just wonder if this is going to be a commercial venture where he's going to be able to sell electricity?
Is that, is that your person, Ben's chief?
Um, no, I'm not going to be entering into a commercial venture here to sell electricity.
You're going to use it all on the farm?
I--
I never heard of solar power drying tobacco, which is the only thing I've said that was going to happen.
I've indicated that, Mr. Miller, I am going to use the fields and open up this area right here for fields. And if I feel that I can afford and utilize some solar power, it was in here. Again, this right here is going to end up being a tobacco field. All right? So you don't need a lot of panels to basically produce electricity. So like I said, I have two bays of panels this long that are going to take care of the whole vineyard and the property around it.
Go ahead.
Wouldn't be much of that area that you'd use for solar.
Correct.
Go ahead. Sorry, I don't know your name, but yeah. Grace Spitzer.
Hi, I'm Fran. I'm from Four Old Farms Lane. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Brignol and I have a couple of issues in regards to accepting these. You, alternative to solar was propane, the heat, as always, the tobacco years and years and years. Has that been, first question, has that been explored versus disturbing a dump area to put solar on? I also want to ask, have you had any other intentions of the pink area? You said it's going to be potentially tobacco. Were you going to have other opportunities for residential or, you know, fixing the property? You said that, that the tobacco had with DEEP, excuse me, EUR, it was contaminated from 2016 to '22. And that has been resolved, it sounds like you said, but is that going to indicate your honesty of how you're going to take that little pink area that's scratched out? Not the cap, but the pink area. Do you fold that into your farmland or will that possibly be residential also?
Okay, first, let's deal with the propane question. Every barn has a propane tank next to it. Right now, this year, propane's not a problem. We're in global warming and historically, back in the 60s, 70s, 80s and even early part of the 90s, heat was the issue. They needed to heat that place because October, November were historically colder than they are now. So right now, we don't need to heat them, but every, every barn has a propane tank. So propane has always been part of the farming operation. Last year, like I said, we had so much humidity that we put in the barns, heat, hot, burns and use the propane. And it still couldn't maintain the buildings the way they needed to maintain. So the propane tanks are there. We, we use that if we can, but for this year, we needed to maintain humidity, not heat. So that's part of the reason why we're--
The drying.
Right. So the second part of this thing is, you have to understand that this is a farm, okay? And it can only be used for a farm. They've sold the development rights. The only activity that can occur on this is a farm-defined activity by statute. That means growing things on--
For how many years?
Forever.
Forever. It's on the land records.
It's been deeded to them. The state and the federal government own the development rights. I can't even put solar on this. I've gone to them and they've said solar is not defined as farming.
Also, your 66 houses you proposed.
I've never proposed 66 houses on this.
I just did some research, that's all.
This? I can't. And Ian will tell you, you couldn't put-- There is a lot right here that has been cut out of the EUR. There's one house lot on this. And I think when they did the, when they did the sale of the development rights, they put a two-acre building lot up here, but it's within the EUR and you can't build on it.
The EUR is a prohibition on residential use because of the historical use of pesticides and the concentrations of pesticides in the soil. And that still exists. It's appropriate for farming, for agricultural use, but it's not appropriate for residential. So again, on the land records, it's, it's an agreement between the owner and DEEP that there is not going to be any residential on this property.
And we can't, I can't then come in here and go, "I'm going to put, you know, 66 houses on this little piece right here, right next to the dump and use this farm to get to it."
Can you show me on the map where the streams are?
Yes.
Muddy Brook Stream and Salmon Brook.
Really, there's only Muddy Brook. And it's Muddy Brook right here and it comes under, near Route 20--
Yeah.
--at the beginning of the transfer station property. Comes all the way down here, goes to here. It keeps on coming down here and goes off of the property and then goes under 189. It comes around and goes that way. So this is the only brook. Now, this is where they've capped it to prevent any of the contamination in here from getting into this brook. It was this brook, that was the brook, that contaminated the houses down here on Washington Ridge--
One mine on one farm on 189.
And yours, yes.
And then there's also, it says important farmlands and the soil says sand. So any disturbance, if you're going to do with the pink area, the slashed area?
Yeah.
Any disturbance to that land, which is still considered part of the dump?
Again, you don't, you haven't seen this. This is, this is a huge mountain. This is very low and it's flat with these fields down here, so--
Okay. And then the cap, you're just going to maintain the cap. You're not going, that means you're putting more dirt on top?
No. No, we can only do what the DEEP says.
Yeah. And it may be that if there's a failure of it, you put in the necessary fill, DEEP's got certain requirements--
And the failure of any potential drainage from that area where you want to build potentially or, or farm?
No, we're not building--
Not worry, farm, you're going to disturb the land. Is that going, since it's all sand, going to deter, go right into Muddy Brook and further down into the Farmington Valley River?
It would have to get by the dump.
Yeah.
It would have to get by the dump.
I don't know. That map is so squished together, it's--
Tried to make it as big as I could, Fran.
Yeah, I know. But I don't want to see more caps.
That's all part of the due diligence too.
Well, it's cap, that's all I wanted to have.
I have a question. You started your presentation claiming that you lost all the crop last year. So what was the financial impact to you at this business of that?
Honestly?
I would appreciate honesty, sure.
Zero. You want to know why?
Okay.
Because what a lot of you don't really know is who uses the farm. Gary, the garlic farmer, grows all of his garlic here. Grows all of his tomatoes here. Grows all of, all of his squash here and his peppers. So he leases--
You said you lost tobacco. You said you lost tobacco.
I'm getting there, my guy.
Yeah.
So I lease it to him. Doug Baggett leases the property from me. Doug Baggett pays me per acre and he puts the tobacco in. And he has the 100 men who basically harvest it, put it in the barns. I don't do that. He lost it and he's insured for it. They basically buy insurance. Tobacco is a crop that you can buy insurance. On this farm, this field right here is all vines. Those are my grapes. We just, we just harvested 40 gap, 40 tons of grapes off of this farm here. And this year, we didn't have to buy any grapes from California.
So help me understand then, so you're looking to purchase this land as a landlord to, to support the, the people that lease the land from?
No, I, I own the land and I will own this.
Yeah, you did.
Well, if, when we clear this, then it will be leasable land to them. It will be--
Your claim was to put solar on it though, right? You started the conversation of how much crop was lost.
Solar is one of the issues. One of, they've asked us what we're going to do with it. I'm going to clear it and turn it into farmland. In addition, if it becomes financially feasible, I'll add solar to it. So I'm kind of giving you an upfront as to what may go there.
Okay.
So it may not, I'm not coming in saying, "It's all going to be farmland and it'll never be anything different." I'm trying to--
Okay.
Be as candid as I can.
But you are seeking to buy it to then lease it to--
No. Seeking to buy it, to clear it and use it for farmland, either from, quite candidly, my son wants to really get into farming and raise cattle and all kinds of things. So he's, we're looking for a place to do that. So again, like I said, I don't know at this point.
Okay. I just, I appreciate the honesty. I don't think that was in, you didn't initially reveal that, provide us more information You didn't initially reveal that, provide us more information about what you're planning to do with it.
Yep.
There's a few people online that I'll just go to. They haven't had a chance. Mike Kremen? Do you want to... Are you ready to speak, Mike?
Yes. Hopefully, I'm unmuted now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just... For the sake of transparency, I understand that broadly, solar for their farm over in Grandy intends to... One of their options is to go through your property, including the farm, and hook up to the electrical grid at some point. So my question is, can you explain to us how that fits into this situation? Where do they intend to hook up to the power lines? Does this land have anything to do with it?
I was under the impression that Northeast Utilities is this parcel right here. So I... It was my understanding that they were going to do something there. They haven't approached me as of yet, but that's my understanding, that they were trying to come in through the State of Connecticut DOT rail lines, and they were going to drill under it, and then they were going to come out up here at Northeast Utilities. Is what their current plan is, is from what I understand.
Okay. I had heard talk that they were thinking of burying lines in their farm over there. Is that...
The State of Connecticut would not allow that because it would be development.
Not farmland.
Okay.
It's not a farm use.
Thank you.
Sandy Lee Malina, Gate Road. Can I just get clarification? Because it's very confusing from the land card online. You have to enter the transfer station through 203 Turkey Hills Road. 205 Turkey Hills Road is 39.01 acres, showing the transfer station outbuildings on that land card. How... Is that a separation of property that's going to be done to get the transfer station away from the dump? And what are the land amounts for each of those properties?
My understanding is either it's being surveyed.
Well, here's what's going on. The transfer station, and I've put it right here. roadway comes in from Route 20 and comes down and goes into this transfer station. The road, if you're at the transfer station and you look beyond, the road continues and goes to the dump. So that's this part of it.
Goes to the land.
So the transfer station is back here on this parcel of land, not on this parcel.
Then why is it on the land card for 205 Turkey Hills Road?
The same as why it said it was a one-acre lot on that, on Holcomb Street, when it was really 2.3. I have no idea. Because I can tell you this, the transfer station is not on the dump.
But it's on an address for 205 Turkey Hill Road?
It's on the address of 203.
203 is the access road. But on the land card that you put in your offer, it shows the outbuildings, and the outbuildings are measured on that land.
Yeah. If anything has to get moved, it will, but I haven't seen the final survey of it. So if it...
She's right. And I'll tell you how. All right? You see this pink line right here? That line doesn't exist. The dump property goes in and goes like this. And they have on... The town owns this little triangle right here. It's separate.
One acre.
What the assessor hasn't shown on this particular map is that this line right here actually exists. And this, the assessor has wrongfully put this as part of the dump. I don't include it as part of the dump because it's not. It's part of... It's owned by the town. This is not owned by the town. But the transfer station basically incorporates a part of this triangle.
There's a separate deed for that.
Is that part of the 39.01?
No.
No. And there's a separate deed for that little triangle that he just showed you.
But the assessor doesn't show it on the assessor's map. So you can't always count on it.
Right. I mean, a land card that's in your offer, and it shows the outbuildings measured.
Yeah, it's just an offer, though. It won't be included.
You know what? You prepare for an offer, and you have everything correct before you start. Because if you wait till later, it might be too late. And I don't think any preparation has been done on this. And that's comment section. I apologize. But I would like that rectified before...
It will be.
It will be.
See, understand this. The assessor's... This map...
Tim?
Pardon?
We'll take comments in a minute, so you don't need to answer that right now if you don't want to. We're only taking questions. Sarah?
So if the town voted for... I don't know how I'm supposed to be asking, actually. If the town decided to move forward with the sale, would we receive information about the inspections and the ongoing... Or like, that's just privy to...
Be public.
So we would like to continue to be made aware of...
Oh, of his... Is the future test public?
Yes.
That we ask for it?
I would think that we would have to be able to make it available to the town, so the town...
I would think it would be available from DEEP as they're mandating the testing. It would be something...
I was just thinking, I just was like...
No, no, no. It would be... It's FOI-able through DEEP. They have to make sure their records are public. And a simple letter to DEEP asking what the status of the testing was on that property would probably... Well, I can't say for certain because... But I know FOI-able is in my world. And if it's something that's able to be released, it's released.
We can put it in the contract that we want to see. Your public testing.
It's fine. Yeah. It's part of the due diligence. We backed up that Phase 1 and the analysis that we do would be shared with them.
I was just... So it's not an, I think... I talked to Dave McKinnon from DEEP, and he said that if they do a pre-application, that they could invite the town because at that time, it will be our property. So we are allowed to be a part of that, and we can make that information public. So certainly, if we had a Let's Talk Turkey, that's a great opportunity.
She asked for future testing, too. So future testing.
Oh, future testing.
That's different than what DEEP...
If we move forward with the sale, like if the vote was yes.
Yeah, we can ask... We can put that in. We've never sold a landfill before, so that's why a lot of public leases are happening. But we would put it in the contract that we want to see. If that's one of the condition that the town wants, we will put it in there. Um, go ahead.
Is there any liability? And I'll direct this to the attorney. Is there any liability that the town will be exposed to? You know, Mr. Brignell spoke that he will be responsible for anything after purchase. Is there anything that may come up, hopefully with the due diligence of the town and the process of the sale, that we as a town might incur cost that might come up as potential liability for us in trying to sell a dump, to which point you had indicated we've never done before?
There's nothing more than we already have. Again, as I mentioned earlier, if there's... If the cap was pierced already, or there's a leak going on now, some sort of damaged the water system that's occurring now, which we wouldn't know about because we do tests biannually, we'd be responsible for that. Anything going forward would be on the new owner.
Okay. So the DEEP or whomever wouldn't come to us and say, "Hey, we found this. You guys need to correct this issue, and it will cost you X in order to do that."
The contract...
That would be part of our process, too, when we're going through the due diligence with DEEP, to make sure that this is getting to be approved by DEEP. Make sure there's nothing wrong with what's in place there today, or the day of the sale, I should say.
Right. The conveyance, my understanding is it's an as-is, whereas this is where we're at right now. Everything future is the buyer.
But we know something is wrong.
If you want to raise your hand, Jennifer, you can raise your hand. So we have five people online. Paula, I can't tell if your hand was raised. Okay. It's just different. Okay. Okay. Paula?
I wondered if there is long-term finances set up for this as far as future generations? 100-year, 200-year, 500-year?
My son's here. I can ask him. When you ask, is there a... Something put in place? DEEP will be here for the next 100 years. And as we go on with the ownership of it, their requirements are going to change, and we will have to comply with those requirements for the next 100 years, for as long as we're all here in the society.
Any finances set up for that? Just, you know, with the climate change, there could be a significant impact on your crops, thus your finances.
Oh, believe me, my finances... If I had to rely on this farm for my finances, we would not be here.
So you're saying, yes, there would be financial... It would be fine 200 years from now?
Well, it's hard to say 200 years from now what's going to happen. But DEEP does require financial assurance, and it could be five-year renewable, 10-year renewable. But there are ongoing requirements in order to make sure there is contingencies available in the event of a worst-case scenario.
Okay. Next, Kay Pond. I assume it's Carrie.
Hi, thanks. Carrie Pond, Nine Crystal Drive. I'll actually reserve... I think that we're not in the comment period yet. I do not have a question. Thank you.
Okay. Online, Keith.
Did you hear me?
Yep.
So I do have a couple of quick questions, and I'll try to make it really fast. In the late 80s, I was here. I was selling real estate at the time. My brother lives on Washington... Or on Jefferson Drive. So I remember what we had to deal with, with people who were interested in buying houses at that time. I think they were new construction at the end of Jefferson Drive, you know, adjacent to Muddy Brook. So it was a real problem for them, and I believe the town had to offer to bring water into those houses. And Mr. Brignell mentioned heavy rain, climate change, and also clearing woodlands, which, you know, to me, in my mind, brings to mind the question of erosion and runoff, you know, possibly into Muddy Brook. So I was wondering, you know, what... If, let's say, you know, God forbid, Mr. Brignell knows, you know, the economy goes bad and Mr. Brignell's LLC fails, and they make a financial decision to file bankruptcy or something like that. Is there provisions for that? Any possibility that... Any possibility that that would leave the town exposed to liability?
Scott?
No. So at that point, DEEP is, again, the one monitoring it. DEEP would be the one who has the financial assurance in place, and they'd be the one who would have to take it over. We'd be absolved by our responsibility at that point.
Right. The town's not going to end up with the property, no matter whatever happens.
It doesn't rework afterwards.
It would then go to DEEP. And then I would have to deal with DEEP, and they would chase me until, yeah, until grave and beyond.
The other... I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The other thing that I'm concerned about is, does anybody see that it might be a potential conflict of interest to have Brignell LLC, the buyer, be paying for our environmental council?
I'll withdraw the offer. I'll withdraw the offer.
Absolutely.
We would be the ones that would hire anybody. He would be reimbursing us as part of an agreement. He would not be directly engaging the environmental council on behalf of the town. He would not be the one under contract with them. The town would be.
Correct.
As a reimbursement, which we'd be the one paying them initially, that would be reimbursed through the sale.
Right. That's standard. Jeff?
So my biggest concern that I'm hearing right now is you're really interested in that highlighted area, and the liability is the capped-off area.
Yeah.
I'm just curious why you... I can't imagine... Nothing against business, but business isn't altruistic where they'll say, "I'll take on this additional liability when I buy this portion," when you could have subsegmented it off. What's the rationale for buying the whole thing instead of just making an offer on the valuable portion of it and leaving the liability back to the town?
Because it's one parcel, and I was under the impression that I had to put the offer in on the parcel of the land.
So would you revise now that you... Would it make more sense, from a business perspective, now that you're aware of that, would it make more business sense to withdraw your offer and revise it to go and just make that...
My lawyer's telling me I probably should. But right now...
I think that solves a whole bunch of issues, I'll just say.
The point is, the point was, the offer was made for that whole parcel, and I put in my offer on that whole parcel.
Okay.
And I mean, in the midst of negotiations in this whole process, if it gets granted, we may come to an agreement that says, "You guys keep the dump, and we'll just take the residual land around, just around here, and, you know, renegotiate the deal."
Yeah, I was going to say, follow up to that.
As a matter of fact, I'd probably pay the same price just for that.
That's what I was going to say, is you'd be losing financial liability, so the value would go up.
But again, we got to move to the next... But then the town's liable for the thing forever. So, you know, we're offering to reduce the expenses of the town, put it on the tax rolls, and bear the liability going forward. That's the current plan.
That is where my question comes in. What is the expense or cost that the town's currently in hurting on this?
That's what I wanted to know.
It's about $10,000 a year for testing, and then Public Works mows it twice a year. They mow the landfill.
And that's it for a year?
Yeah.
But we have full liability?
We have... Our town's insurance policy covers it. It's not an active leaking landfill, so we're not paying extraordinary money. But it's under our umbrella, yes.
If it should leak, we're paying for it. We're responsible right now.
Correct.
Whereas if he buys it...
Correct.
We no longer have that responsibility for the...
We're not selling it. We're not going to be selling it and then keeping the liability. We're not signing a contract where we're selling it and keeping the liability. I hope we're making that clear.
Could he turn around and sue us? Is, as your attorney...
Anyone can sue anyone.
All right.
So what happens, and Ann will tell you, there's a spill that happens downstream. All right? Five homes get together, and they basically sue the source of the spill. They sue the person that owns the landfill because that's where it came from. So the people that are being sued would be us and the town. Because they're going to include the town, and they're going to include us. And we both have insurance for that. So if... And if, at the end of the day, it's determined that it was because of something I did and not what the town did, then I will be 100% responsible for whatever the damage is. But if it's determined that it's 50% the town and 50% us, their insurance pays half and my insurance pays half. We have insurance for this very...
Right. So we could be sued by two people. We could be sued by you and...
Could you please raise your hand if you want to ask a question? Because we have other people waiting.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'd like you in the back.
I finished mine. I finished.
Oh, I'm sorry. You had more to your question. Sorry.
I can remember now. So if you... Let me get it right. So if it's an act of God and it's in your ownership, are you then responsible, or are we both responsible, or the town?
Like what?
I don't know. Like a fire or something. Something messed up.
Tornado rips off the cap. Let's go with that one.
Tornado rips off the cap. My insurance has to repair the cap and fix...
Even if it's an act of God, it would fall to you?
It would be my responsibility to maintain it back to where it's supposed to be as a result of an act of God.
That sounds like a win to us.
Yes, pros and no no.
You have a question back there, and then I'll...
I do have a couple of questions. One is about the farmland. You said you cleaned it up?
Yes.
So was that through a program with DECD and DEEP? Or was that a DEEP program?
It was through DEEP.
And what was involved? So what does clean it up look like?
All right.
All right, it's, it was subject to what's called the Transfer Act back when Thral acquired the property. And so it was a Transfer Act property, and it was an establishment. So Thral engaged in the remediation of the property. There were some hotspots, there were some excavation that was going on. But then with the widespread pesticides, the land use restriction, the environmental use restriction was placed on the property.
And with that land use restriction of pesticides, contaminated soil, you still can grow crops on that?
Yes, because it's agricultural. Yep.
So you can grow crops that people can eat. For those, pesticides. So in other words, when you say you cleaned it up, you didn't actually get rid of the pesticides in the soil?
In some hotspots, yeah. It was. There were some hotspots. But you can use pesticides for, you know, regulated use.
But if it...
Made up here, yeah.
So as a point of order, can we talk about the piece of property that we're selling right now? So can we, if you have something specific that's to the Thral farm?
Has a piece of property on it that would be also contaminated?
No, it's never been farmed.
That was never farmed?
Correct.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, Keith, oh, did you call off?
No, go ahead. You wanna go up these two? Keith, go ahead. You're on the...
Just, just one last, last question. Is there any chance that during the inspections, inspection with a cap, or whatever it has to happen, to, you know, move forward with the sale, that something could be disturbed in the process, that the cap could be breached? Anything like that that we're at risk for? You know, that it might be better just to leave alone? I have, I have no expertise in this, but I'm just wondering if that's an option or a possibility?
Anything's possible.
Disturb something that's better left alone?
Yeah, anything's possible, but you are able, certainly, there are monitoring wells out there already. You do take certain care in order to install soil borings, to determine what's there. I'm not convinced yet soil borings is where we're gonna go. We want, look at the old historic environmental reports to see what's out there. Because the landfill conditions itself hasn't changed, because it has been an active landfill for a long, long time. And so what you do is you monitor it based upon what the groundwater conditions are. And that's more likely than not what we're going to look at. Possible outside of the cap area, we could poke up some holes, but that has not yet been determined. Especially given the history, it's never been farmed.
In our offer, we have requested to be able to do a Phase 1. And a Phase 1 is only walking on the land. We've not asked for a Phase 2 or a Phase 3, which would require or allow us to do drilling and boring. So our, our contact with the land is basically a walking excursion, looking for things bubbling up and, you know, damaged cap or things like that. That's what we can physically see. So it's not like we're going to be out there doing something that's going to create a problem.
Okay. You didn't finish, I guess?
Yeah, I just am curious, because it bothers me that we are being asked to vote basically on something that our town hasn't even hired an environmental lawyer to review. I have a pro, I think that's putting the cart before the horse, frankly. And I don't think it's appropriate to ask us to vote on that until we have an environmental lawyer who is actually doing the work to, to protect the town. Because Mr. Brignol is a lawyer, he has an LLC, he has sued the town a number of times.
I'm gonna stop. If you wanna do this during comment, that's fine, but this is questions. Is it a question?
My question is, why is it that we have come this far without having hired an environmental attorney to represent ourselves?
We answered that question earlier.
I didn't really hear an answer.
He answered it.
I didn't hear an answer.
Answer it again. Reason being is the town's not approved this yet. The plan is we don't want...
The town accepted a bid.
We didn't accept, we didn't sign an offer. We didn't sign the contract.
We've not signed a contract. This is up to the town, at the town meeting to decide if they agree to sell this property. At that point, we will incur the expenses...
But I don't understand how the town could accept a bid on this without having an environmental lawyer to review the offer. I don't really understand that.
Well, that's the profit, that's, it's the process of land sales, is you accept the offer, public hearings, town vote, that's how it works. So we're not, and then you sign a contract. That's how land sales work.
And then, so there's no representation for the town to know?
There will, yes. We're not signing a contract without it. We're not...
There's no environmental lawyer here.
Okay, Jason, you have a question? Online?
Yes. Ms. Cantino, you're an environmental lawyer in Connecticut, that's correct, right?
Am I? Yes.
Wonderful. So can you please tell me, are you aware of any instances where someone has purchased contaminated land and then something has happened? And the original contaminator is the one that was actually gone after? Is that correct? That does happen? That is, that's a federal, that's, that's gonna live to the federal, not just state laws, correct?
In, in, yeah. Under, under CERCLA, the past owner and operator EPA goes after.
Ms. Cantino, has that happened? Because you're standing here in front of everyone telling us that you're buying everything, you're buying a liability, the town will not be responsible, will take care of everything. And that's not, that's not what happens in many, many instances, not just a singular, many. Once something does happen, that, they have to go after the original contaminator, which is the town. That is, that's the fact of a landfill. The town is the original contaminator, and therefore would still hold some liability. We would not be liability free with this sale on any factor. Isn't that correct, Ms. Cantino?
Well, this is a commercial transaction, and the risks and li, liabilities...
Ms. Cantino, would the town be liability free? That is not true, correct?
I'm trying to answer your question.
Ms. Cantino, you did not. The town, what I'm asking you, I'm asking you because you're, to explain to these folks, we, the town would not be liability free. That is not how this works, correct?
Jason, allow her to answer your question and stop interrupting her. So let her answer.
This is a commercial transaction where risks and liabilities are transferred between two commercial parties. Is it lock solid? It's gonna be as lock solid as the attorney Lingmanfelter and myself can make it with respect to each of our respective clients. Under CERCLA, which is a federal law, past owners and operators can be liable to EPA. That hasn't happened in the state of Connecticut for a very long time. Superfund sites are largely long gone.
Hey, they're broke.
They used to...
Ms. Cantino, go ahead, go ahead.
There used to be quite a bit of activity going after past owners and operators, generators, haulers, transporters. Happened a lot downstate, Beacon Heights, Laurel Park landfill, we've got sites in Stratford. Has it happened? Yes. Is it a frequent occurrence today when you have a commercial transaction? No.
Jason, do you have another question?
Yes, Sandy, thank you. So, so there is still liability the town could and does possess even through, if the sale is approved. And the second question is, so Root depresses the LLCs, so limited liability, so there's a cap on what can and would be responsible for and what he would have to pay. So then at that point, they would then go after possibly, as you just explained to these folks, the town. Now Eden, is the town self-insured for this?
We haven't signed a contract yet.
Now Eden, is the town self-insured?
Steve's, or...
In general, not.
Our town's not insured for this.
You're insured.
We have, yes. But as I mentioned earlier, future liability, if the LLC were to go bankrupt, would not fall back on the town. We would transfer our liability at that time.
Right. It goes to the DEEP.
It would not have transferred your liability. The EPA would come back on you.
No, DEEP has the, has the financial support protection in place.
You're wrong.
Yeah.
Jason, you're wrong.
The town would be second, no. No, actually, I'm not. And that's why I asked Ms. Cantino, because you stated your town would be liability free, we would have nothing to worry about. You just admitted that that is actually not the case.
We didn't say the town would be liable.
There is a chance that the town still would own, would possess liability.
The town has liability today. The town will continue to have liability.
Okay.
Or everything prior to that.
Absolutely, but, but our liability, but our liability is very limited when that soil and that area is left undisturbed.
No, that's not true.
We have no liability if no one touches it. Yes, it's extreme, it's much, much smaller chance, and anything could happen, as we are monitoring every six months, and no one is touching it.
Jason, do you have another question?
That's why I had such a serious concern with, with Eden when I asked her who was surveying the land. I knew who was surveying the land, but what quite, what frightened me was that our first selectman was telling me that no one was surveying the land.
Jason, do you have another question?
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure that everyone was, where the town is not liable, they'll vote to be free if we sell this landfill. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you're going to take over the dump, does that mean you're gonna take over the operation of the dump?
It's the landfill. It's just the landfill. It's not the, it's not the recycling center.
Kathy, what happened is, if you go to the transfer station, if you look at the transfer station, and you look in the back where they dump the leaves on the right, and you got the dumpsters on the left, there's a road that goes all the way back there. And that road goes to this property. So if you look at this map, you'll see this dotted line comes down. Here's your transfer station, and the road continues to come down to this piece. So we're not talking to transfer station.
Way behind.
Right. We're way, way in the woods and completely surrounded by the fire.
It should be referred to as the landfill, the old landfill. Yeah. Go ahead.
I just, this, so while it seems a noble cause to generally take the liability off the, the town, right? And you've stated you don't really make, you didn't lose money. I just, I'm really struggling to understand, you're a smart, you're a businessman, you're a smart guy, for $50,000, can you, can you please just restate why you bought the land? I just, I'm really struggling to kind of two plus two equal four. It just seems for $50,000 because your son wants to do some farming, but take on all that liability, which seems like a lot, you've got an environmental lawyer, why do you want it?
Ann? Looking to farm, and that's really what the value of it is to me.
So that, so the, all that liability that we're talking about at length, and all that exposure that you could have to your LLC?
And I'm hoping that you guys did a great job on capping it, and there's gonna be no further problems, and we're not gonna do anything to interfere with it, and we're not going to, why would we possibly go out there and do some harm to that and then put ourselves as exposed? So if we leave it alone, if we leave it alone and we use what we want, then it's a $50,000 piece of property that I think that it's what it's worth.
Does anyone else have any other questions? So, Mr. Miller?
Here it is, this all head. Just for instance, let's say that Hamilton Standard put 50, 55-gallon drums of bad stuff in the landfill a long time ago, and...
They did.
They did. But that's why I brought it up.
You would know about it now. Those drums would have rotted and it would have contaminated and gone downstream. You would know about it.
And it's been capped, so they, when they, when they did the landfill, they knew that those...
Those drums rot away over time.
Right.
So if you do a, an analysis of what is there now, and I'm assuming if something changes down the road, the town's not liable, the town is liable for what is now.
Correct.
Down the road, those 55-gallon drums rot out and a bunch of stuff comes out, and down by Simsbury Airport someplace, there's more pollution going on. Who's liable there?
I don't tell you. We would be.
Yeah, we'd be. Because we're, assuming we own the landfill at the time, it rotted under our watch.
Okay. Did you have a question?
I guess the, the only question I have is, when you made your proposal, you, the other two people made proposals of why they wanted to do this, and you said, "You live in Granby, you love Granby, you're part of Granby, you're part of this, you're part of that." And they had these cute little letters. You had this contract that looks like God knows what. If I say yes to voting for you to take the property, how do I know what that contract says? Do I, do we have to buy our environmental lawyer?
We're not signing that contract. It was an offer. We're not signing that contract at all. We're writing...
So it's just an offer, that whole big thing doesn't matter?
Correct.
Because that scared the bejesus out...
The other offers are called love letters in the real estate world.
Well, that's what I said. He said, he talked about how he loved these Granby and stuff like that. And I look at this contract, and I'm like, damn, I'm not signing nothing, I'm not even gonna agree.
It's not like the normal real estate where we're...
Okay, so we will have an environmental lawyer by then?
Yes.
To look that whole thing over and do their due diligence?
Yes.
Okay, because that scared me.
See, the only thing that we're doing right now is we're getting the approval from the owners of the property to take the next step. And the next step is to get your lawyer to talk to my lawyer and reach an agreement that is pretty standardized for the industry. It's not, it's Greek to me, it's Greek to you, but to them, they know how it goes.
All I'm saying is, everybody said, you know, this is why we want the property, this is what our offer is, and then you come in with this huge thing that nobody can understand. The other question I have is, if you go into Phase 3 and you disrupt, you said Phase 1, you walk around, Phase 2?
We're only looking to do a Phase 1. We're now looking to do a 2 or 3, because we don't want to disturb it.
Okay, I was gonna say, what happens if you disturb something?
No, no, no.
It's likely not gonna be in the dump, and we've gotta look at the records. The condition of the landfill has only degraded over time, which has, it will show up in the groundwater monitor reports. We need to see those reports. We need to see how the landfill was found.
So you're not gonna, you're not gonna open up anything before you buy it?
No.
Not test it or anything?
This is an approval to get us to take the next step.
No, I know, but before you, before you test anything or unearth anything or try anything, you're gonna own it.
If we were gonna do anything, understand this, just so that you know.
Okay.
We go to the vote, it goes yes. We then meet with the town, no testing's done. We reach an agreement that allows what testing can be done. So the agreement that we reach will provide for the testing. Now, the town's not gonna let us do any testing before we buy it.
Okay.
That would interfere with the dump and cause liability for the dump. So that's why we said, that's why I put in there that I would agree to having only a Phase 1 dump before the closing.
Miss that part.
It was a long document. It was a long document.
Okay.
But understand, in the interim from going to the, from the contract to a closing, the due diligence, that process all occurs after the agreement, after we all vote.
Hey, Kelly, night, I'm Bernard Drive. If everything happens the way you just said, if the town were to say, okay, we'll sell, we'll sell the dump, and then you go down to the next, the next step, the next step. We're hoping that we will be held, that the town will be held, what's it called? At one point, if there is something found, how far down the process can the town back out and say, "No, we don't want it, you know, we don't want to sell"?
Prior to closing.
Yeah, prior to closing. There's gonna be off-ramps on both sides.
There'll be contingencies in any contract, either side can get out if they're not...
Yeah, if I go in there, and I go in there and I do my walkthrough, and I see that there's like percolating, you know, like the old, what was it, that commercial, Beverly Hillbillies, there's the bubbling oil coming out of the ground, I'm gonna look at you and go, "I don't want to touch this."
If there's bubbly oil, it's okay then.
You had another question?
Town's perspective, okay, so how far down, because the road can we back out? How would that be determined? Meaning, would that be just Board of Selectmen would say, "Oh, we're backing out"? Would there be another town meeting? It'll be, it'll be in the contract. It'll be the attorney's...
It would be the Board of Selectmen would have the final say, but it'd be pending, town attorney, town attorney and Board of Selectmen, final approval of all documents. So they would have the option to pull out if there is a, if there's an issue that comes up that puts the town at risk of something that we don't want to be put at risk of.
Thank you.
Yes. On the Board of Selectmen meeting on 10/29, our first select person said that the town attorney would do all three closings for $4,500. And I think we need to get a reassessment on that, because if we're going to have an environmental attorney come in, which I really think we need to do, and for some reason we need to do any type of study ourselves and go past a Phase 1, it's gonna be a heck of a lot more than $4,500. And I would like a realistic estimate on all the costs associated with getting this deal to table.
So you understand that all of the testing that gets done...
I am asking the town, please.
Be done by us.
So, as I was trying to bring up, say, and the testing would be done by them. However, the environmental attorney that's gonna assist us and all, as has been mentioned tonight, we'd be reimbursed for. That would not be...
Be reimbursed by who?
By the...
Okay. And what are your closing costs gonna be? You're gonna do all, both sales for $4,500?
I hope so.
The cost to town? It's hourly, but it will be under that for the expense to the town by the end of the day, with Attorney Brignol reimbursing the cost for this. Let me tell you about the Spoonville property. There's not as much that goes into that. This one is the one that has the most work because of the landfill, because of the, because of the environmental possibilities there, and because we'll be engaging others, whether it be people at DEEP, environmental attorney, whatnot.
And why don't we have DEEP here tonight? And why are we asking questions of the buyer's attorney when we should not be taking any advice from the buyer's attorney? At least, that's the way I was brought up.
You did have conversations with DEEP, yeah.
Yeah, I've been speaking with them.
Why aren't they here, though? I mean, there's questions here.
Yeah.
You don't want to hire an attorney yet, you don't need one. But I think the DEP should have been here.
We have.
Does anyone else have a question?
At least an attorney.
Okay, then can we move on to comments in favor?
To that, I don't need to be up here, do I?
No, well, sorry, can we just sit down if you want?
Can I move this here?
Sure. Any comments in favor, Mr. Classy?
Yes, I just, just one more question, talking about the attorneys, the environments, and attorneys that the town will pay upfront for. Will Mr. Brignol be paying or reimbursing the town if those, should the deal not close for any reason?
Good question. Scott?
Cypress Hill just left the building.
Certainly seek that from him, yes.
Hold on.
We can make it a conditional.
So I have two questions.
If we back down, would you start reimbursed for the attorneys?
If there's no closing, will you reimburse the environmental attorney?
No. Close the deal, I'll pay for your lawyers. If you don't close the deal, you're on your own.
Exactly. It sounds like we, you know, we might be stuck with their legal bill.
Yep, agreed.
All right, would anybody like to?
That would only be after you vote yes. And we can't come to an agreement for some reason. I mean, honestly, I'm a buyer, I'm willing to pay more for it. I'm willing to pay for your lawyers. If the deal blows up, it's because there's a problem with the dump. And if there's a problem with the dump, you guys are in bigger trouble than, we all are in bigger trouble than with your closing attorney's fees.
Would anyone like to speak in favor?
Yeah.
All right, would anyone? Oh.
Rob Wimper, 79 Holcomb Street. Um, I think, as someone who actually grew up in town, went to Seymour School when we actually had bottled water brought in, kind of personal with this. Uh, but what I think's being presented here is a great opportunity for the town to rid themselves of this dump with somebody who's willing to take the, make the investments of doing all the inspections, the dealing with the deep, um, to move forward. So I think we'd be at a loss if we didn't at least pursue going down the road. This isn't a sale, this is a, an offer is a negotiate, a start of a negotiation. And I think with the, with the guidance of our Board of Select and our town attorney, we can come up with something that will work for this town moving forward and hopefully removing that liability from us. Thank you.
Okay. Um, would anyone like to speak in opposition?
Jeff Hectick, Ranger Circle. I live about a half a mile through the woods from there, so this makes me really nervous with any possible disruption to the dump. There are so many things that I'm nervous about, specifically with Brignol. I know he said he's sued the town twice. I have heard, and I don't know enough to refute or believe these, that he is in an active lawsuit against our fire marshal because he was actively burning. I, I've seen a pattern of ask for forgiveness rather than go through the right channels to seal a deal with the property across from All Grove. Uh, he mentioned that he's a taxpayer. What he failed to mention is, I think he only pays about $20,000 in property taxes for all of that farm right now, because it is low assessment, it's assessed at around $550,000 because it's a farm, and I'm not disputing that. I think that's good for the farmers. So throwing all that out there, the big thing that really bothers me is, he has the opportunity to, well, two things. One, we have the opportunity where we might be able to monetize this and make it more equitable for us than $50,000 and going through all these hoops and taking on some sort of liability. The second piece is, he has the option, or he had the option to sector out this property and only take the property that wasn't capped off, reducing the risk to him and keeping the liability with us. I have concerns with private enterprise taking on that liability, because if something does happen to the LLC in the future and he gets sued, we, we've seen it with, with a lot of people, political people to be named, where they, they say, I, I'm filing bankruptcy, I can't be sued anymore. I mean, I understand there might be some EPA-type coverage or deep coverage for this stuff, but the, the pockets don't run deep. If they need to run new city water all the way down Route 20 to get it to everyone else over there, there's just a lot of risk for $50,000 where we could be capitalizing in other ways. I just, I don't think that this process has gone through enough due diligence to even consider it at this point. And I wouldn't consider selling that capped-off area at all.
Thank you. Are you gonna talk?
I'm completely against the sale of this property to anyone, and in particular Brignol. You know, we have, there have been tonight a lot of questions that were only answered by his environmental lawyer. And I don't see that that is in our best interest. Um, I asked that DEP, someone from DEP be here tonight. I asked that we had an environmental lawyer here tonight at that meeting on Tuesday morning at 9:00 AM. And obviously, that didn't happen. I know that DEP can send people to meetings like this. I've been in a position where I insisted on that happening, and it happened. So, um, I'm very disappointed. I don't think the town is showing its readiness to take on the answers to the questions we have. I don't see the town is ready or prepared to take on any kind of conversation about this without having an environmental lawyer representing us. And I do think, given the situation that he won't pay a penny if the sale doesn't go through, we're really putting ourselves out there for a huge bill because we must retain an environmental lawyer. That's not gonna be inexpensive. And we don't know, because nothing has been researched before this was made available for sale. It should have been done before you said yes to his offer of wanting to purchase this.
Thank you. Sarah, did you have something?
Thanks for cutting me off.
I thought you were finished. Do you have more to do?
I got the message. Thank you.
I was in agreement with having a lot of concerns about this sale. And it is not something that, as a community member, I feel comfortable moving forward without. This is not something a rush into. Like, I don't know why this was just like put in like a few weeks ago. And it's like, I just, it seems like if it were to go forward, there's a lot of layers.
There is. There is a lot.
But you have not built trust.
You haven't done any.
To stand here and say, if you vote yes, we'll take care of it. It doesn't feel comfortable. No, it's a community member.
This makes waste. No reason why this has to be carried along. If it takes another six months, it takes another six.
That's fine.
Well, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for cutting me off, too.
Wait. Sorry. I thought you were done. Mr. Miller, do you, Mr. Miller, do you have more you want to say?
No, not fast.
We're gonna do our two online really quickly and we'll go back. Okay, Cheryl?
Uh, thank you. I, I am opposed. And, well, I, I don't really know about the formal dump. Um, I don't know why he would want to buy this, this property. We've seen that he's taken over a lot of properties. His, he's really ruined the environment, the housing environment in Granby where his vineyard has abutted to the point where those, all those homeowners are in a process of suing him as well. He's approached on their property, he's, he's pushed the buttons as far as he can. And I think there was a woman that mentioned here that, um, why would you want to spend $50,000? That's precisely the point. Mr. Brignol does not do anything that he is not going to recoup money from. And he seems to be able to manipulate the system to get what he needs out of it. Um, we see the farm right in the center of town. You know, he, he throws a couple of cows on it, and now it's farmland. So he doesn't have to pay the taxes on it. You can guarantee that if he's doing something with solar power, he's going to be selling it and making a profit and calling it a farmland. So I, I am opposed of this. And I think we should be very, very cautious with Mr. Brignol's activities in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Carrie?
Hi, thanks. Carrie Pond, Crystal Drive. Um, I'll be brief. Um, we've talked a lot, I've heard a lot of folks tonight talking about liability and liability, liability being transferred to the LLC. And obviously, that, that seems to be, you know, the, the most positive thing that could come out of this, right? That, that East Granby wouldn't have any liability with respect to the dump. But I think we also heard even from Mr. Brignol or Attorney Brignol and his counsel that there's no guarantees, right, that East Granby would ever be sued if there was any kind of damage or contamination in the future. In fact, probably a good chance, right, that there would have to be some determination as to what caused the contamination. Was it something that the LLC did to disturb the cap? Or was it some contamination that East Granby did in the past that East Granby had? To the very least, right, I think you could expect that there would be allegations against the town. Well, obviously, Mr. Brignol and the LLC, they're not gonna, we can't, you know, it's in their best interest not to do that, right? They're, we don't expect them to. Um, but there's no guarantees that we're not gonna get sued in the future. But at least right now, if there's any liability, it's, it's, um, it's something that we have control over. A lot of the questions tonight were to Mr. Brignol about what are you gonna do with the property? And the fact of the matter is, if we sell it to him, he can do whatever he wants to with it. And we have no control over that. So, like I said, it's not in his best interest to go and disturb the cap. But if something should happen, or if he starts using the property in a way that East Granby wouldn't have done, that potentially creates a risk of contamination, then, then there's nothing that we could do about it. So I think that we need to think really seriously about, you know, what risk we have right now for liability versus what risk we might have in the future and whether that, that is something that, um, you know, is a risk we're willing to take. I don't think we should take it. I think that we should retain control of what is happening with this property so that we can admit our exposure for any kind of liability going into the future. Thank you.
John, do you want to go ahead? Your mute button's on. John Thomas? Okay, is anyone else here?
Go, Jen. Go ahead.
So this might be a little repetitious, but I think it's a very bad idea to disturb a site full of hazardous materials. As mentioned before, in 1988, the town had significant expenses to put a number of houses on well that had been contaminated by the dump. Why would we possibly risk having that happen again? What we have now is a very simple status quo, an annual expense of $10,000 to monitor. I'm a civil engineer, licensed in Connecticut. I've worked on a lot of big hazmat remediation sites. Once you touch it, it goes south. I mean, they just, uh, the Learning Corridor in Hartford cost an extra $6 million, delayed all those schools we were building a year. University of Hartford had delayed a housing project they built there. The Walk Bridge in Norwalk, millions of dollars for this plume that had crept under our site from a site nearby. Huge cost project delays of the work, the scope of remediation work always gets bigger. If we disturb the site, or if someone disturbs the site and we're forced to remediate it, it will cost us millions of dollars. The town is self-insured. It will affect all of us directly if something bad happens on that property. I didn't know that Mr. Brignol could not put solar panels on the farm. So I assumed he's got 400 acres, let him put them over there. Maybe they could go on the roofs of the barns, but. Maybe they're not structurally sound, but.
No, it's agricultural use in a camp.
Yeah, so I didn't know that. I thought he would have the option to put funds.
Wayne Hayes, Six Washington Ridge. Um, I'm just concerned what you have there. If you mess with it, uh, there's too many people that are gonna be affected. You sell it to him, and it's like the woman said, he's gonna do what he wants. You'll have no control. I don't trust him or anybody else playing in that area. Uh, I find it to be too much of a danger for the future of the town. And in my opinion, the selectmen are here for the people of the town. And this is foolish to even be considering it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I've held my peace long enough. I'm Bob Ravens, 83 Newgate Road. Um, this doesn't make any sense. Uh, we know Tim, right? Uh, he's, by his own mission, already sued the town twice. He's metastasizing all over the town. If anyone's familiar with Dukes of Hazard, he's like Boss Hogg of East Granby. Call for reference for those of us of a certain age. It just doesn't make any sense. $50,000, it is peanuts. There's obviously, and he's not doing it for our sake, he's doing it for himself, okay? Uh, in my five and a half years on planning and zoning commissions, he was always before us. Uh, we were always telling him, yes, do this, this, this. He never would. He would never comply with the things that he did. There's no reason to expect that he will start to comply now. He's just not that kind of a person. Don't expect someone of Tim's age to suddenly turn on a dime and suddenly be a completely different person. Now, we know he's always been for decade after decade after decade. It doesn't make any sense. It is not in the best interest of the town. The government of this town is here to serve the interests of the town, not to serve the interests of Tim Brignol.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something, just to stop the hate, is this is going to the town for a vote. It's not our decision. So come out and vote, just like.
But it would be your decision if we vote yes. So I'm urging everyone in this room to vote no.
Just like in our election, you can come out.
So it's still in our hands.
It's your decision. You already accepted these bids.
So, Amy, can I just ask a clarifying question for your sake? So you said you'd have to refer back to notes from 2007. Is that the last time that the town considered selling land? So, and I guess, what's that answer first?
Someone approached the town to purchase something, yes. Which has happened in all three of these cases.
So just suddenly, three people came forward?
Yes.
Since 2007 to purchase?
Yes. So according to our head of public works, who's been here for 40 years?
Yeah.
37 years, and another employee who's been here for 40 years. I also would like to mention, I went to them and asked them. I gave them as much time as they needed, and they took about three or four months to look at and think of any other property in town that would be worth selling. Because, because Cassie reached out to me a year and a half ago. I'm married to a member of Wimper Farms. It's no secret, Robert's my brother-in-law. We've known Cassie, my hus- my husband was born and raised here. He's known Cassie her entire life. He knows, I talk about work sometimes at home. I try not to, but I mentioned the fact that Cass wanted to buy a piece of property. He's like, oh, I've always wanted the land on Holcomb Street. It was offered to my dad how many years ago, for $2,000. The town couldn't wait to get rid of it for years. So that's how, it all happened organically.
So, right, so there's, in politics, there's no such thing as coincidence, right? So when did you come into office? When did you get elected? What year? Was it November of 2023?
I started January 3rd, 2022.
I'm gonna stop, because we need to stick to our agenda and have some sense of decorum here in our meetings. And we've really lacked that the last couple of meetings. So we need to stay back on. Does anyone have any comments in opposition to this property?
Can I just ask one, one clarifying question on the process? Because I, I, I understand that offers came through and you brought them forward. Is there a process where if we bring forward an offer, you either choose to decline or accept or bring it to the town?
Yes, I already discussed that. We have, okay.
So if I were to make an offer on a piece of property, would you be obligated to bring it to the town for a vote? Because at the end of the day, that, I think, is where, where it's coming from, is you, whether you have the obligation or not, if you have the obligation to bring this to us, that's your problem.
Put the land up for sale, just like we did this.
But if I were to say, I want to pay $3 million for, uh, for East Granby Farms, would you be obligated to bring that to the town as a reasonable proposal?
The answer is no. I think if you have further questions, certainly that is something that you can send to the first selectman or you can send to Scott. And then that is all public information. We would be putting in our comments, I would assume. So we would be sharing that with the town anyway.
I'll beg rest.
Okay.
I would like to just throw out the fact that when the library, the old library was purchased and the ball field behind it, I believe that was the 2007 sale, if my memory serves me correctly. That was done, that was done on a town meeting only. It was an agenda item on a town meeting. So the question of veracity in this particular instance, I find mute. We have done above and beyond what was done on previous sales. We put it up for sale. We followed all the rules. We asked counsel for help. Um, you know, I, I thought putting this forward would do exactly this. It would get people involved, so they would be the ones to make the decision on whether or not we sell this property. There's a town meeting in a week to decide whether the town sells the property. Please, show up and vote. I, I hope so. I don't need, I mean, I am, I don't need anything about any of these properties. This is something for the town to decide, not the three of us. This is something for the town to decide, not the three of us, not the town attorney, not you, not you, not you, not anybody else in here. The totality of the town, if it is going to be sold, the only reason I was for it is if we could get a contract that would lock us up away from the liability of a spill down the line, that would be, that would be something I would find beneficial. If it cannot be done, then we don't sell it. But I don't get to make that decision. The folks from town do. I represent the town. Not anybody in this room, not even myself. I represent the town. If it was something I was involved in, I would recuse myself. Period, end of story. That is my comment for the property on the dump. Thank you for your time.
I think you just nailed it on the head, though. I think that's why the town isn't involved, because she didn't recluse herself, and she seemed to have a conflict of interest. So I'm just saying, that's, I think that's why everybody's involved, and that's why everybody is such an uproar. And it just seems like everything happened so quickly and so, I know you said you didn't have to, but nobody knew about it.
And we did what we thought was relevant, to get it out there.
I know. It just didn't feel that way to everybody in town.
I oppose this land deal because it was done as a real estate deal, and a contaminated landfill is not a simple real estate deal to which you-
This isn't a typical real estate deal.
To which you said at one of the town meetings, and I have it right here in the minutes, that you need a lawyer experienced in real estate sales. There's no concern, what about town safety? What about people's home values? I've heard nothing from you for that, except getting rid of town liability. So I think the way this was approached was totally incorrect. This is not a library and a baseball field. This is contaminated land being purchased by a company who doesn't really have a good relationship with our town, liability-wise whatsoever. You called it a ticking time bomb on October 9th. Concerns were voiced by select person Thompson about environmental issues and safety issues, and there was nothing from our first select person about the safety of our town and the safety of the deal. And you can't wait until the last minute, when you're making the deal, to have all the information. It makes no sense. And for that reason, I ask everyone to vote no.
Thank you. Is there any other, anybody else who wants to speak in opposition?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll close the public hearing. Oh, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I'll be in favor of closing public hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
Thanks. I'll switch to anybody. I want to choose.[1759.15]